To order please. Thank you all for attending this evening. Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag. Let's hear it, everybody.
States of America and to the republic.
For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this point, I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Brown, who will introduce our presenters this evening.
Well, thank you very much Chairperson Guyer. I will do a very quick turnaround here and I'm going to introduce Robyn. And Robyn, if you would introduce your team. And I know Matt, you'll help her with the screen share. So, either way, thank you. It's nice to have you here.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm Robyn Tannenbaum. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Not okay, okay. I'm Robyn Tannenbaum with CHA Architecture in Portland. And I think I met some of you when I was up with Alan. He's on the top row in my little set of bubbles. I don't know how he appears to others. When he and I came up to do the community forum recently, or actually was not recently, it was back in January. Anyways, we have a presentation for you tonight. It will be largely, I guess facilitated by Alan with me supporting with a slideshow and some other items. But just so you know who everyone is, Alan, can you raise your hand? Woohoo. Okay, there's Alan Klineholm, who's the principal here at CHA Architecture. Also from CHA Architecture is Bob Curtis. Bob is sitting out by the marsh. You might see him. And I think that's to disguise his background. And last he texted me, he was, are you still having trouble with your audio, Bob? Yeah, I can't hear you.
I think you gotta take off mute there, Bob, if you can.
I don't think that's it. So he's, he's sending me some messages. And so while you start talking, I'll see if I can help him. He could re-enter. We'll work on that.
Yeah, okay. So I can, let me just pick it up and read.
Why don't you go ahead? And shall I go ahead and actually just one sec, screen share, Matt? Can I go ahead and take over to put my presentation up? So I'm gonna screen share. Share. Can you see?
There we go.
I got it.
Okay, great. I couldn't have it up while I was looking at you. Great. Thanks, Al.
Yep. So I, you know, first of all, I hope everybody's healthy. You know, these are really kind of different times. And our office, I share with everybody, it looks a little bit like a dorm room after the last day of classes. Everybody has just sort of moved out and got up and left and we're all working from our homes. Robyn is working from the office. She has accessed all the data and everything that's there. And so she's been helping put together this presentation. Bob is working remotely. But we also thought it'd be good to take this opportunity and include some of our consultants that were part of the team that toured the buildings and the schools. And so from Allied Engineering, I have Brian Gardner, who's gonna talk a little bit, doing overview on electrical systems. I got Ian McDonald for mechanical systems. Bob Curtis of our office will talk about the architecture and some of the code things we saw. And potentially our structural engineer, Bill Fosher, will join up with us. And last but not least, we have Andy Johnston from ARC, who has spent some time evaluating the sites. So the three schools that we looked at in the presentation, high school, the middle school, and the grade school, most of our focus was on the grade school. We looked at the enrollment capacity and the space utilization for all of the schools. But we primarily focused on the grade school for a deep dive into mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural systems, given the age and the complexity. So here's our team. Next slide, Robyn, please. Yep, here's, here's our team. Allied Engineering on the left is Brian on the far left, Bill Fosher on structural, and Ian McDonald from mechanical. And our office on the right-hand side, and you can see Bob, Robyn, and myself. And there is Andy Johnson from ARC in the upper-left-hand corner. Next slide. So, yeah, there we go. So we've, with our consultant team, we've actually had multiple tours, thanks to Connie and Jeff. And I think we've crawled through all the spaces at the grade school. We also toured the middle school and the high school, but not as, how would you say, in-depth. We've also had a community forum where we presented at least the idea of the study and what we were looking at, the solicit feedback. And that's also attached in appendix of the, of the study. Next slide, please. So here's the winter grade school. We're gonna, we'll come back around to this. But as we talk about the building and here, our consultants kind of giving a little bit of a review. We'll refer to it as the north wing, I think the new addition and the south addition, the south wing, right, Robyn?
Yes, I'm here. This is cool. I have another slide, but north wing.
Yep.
Well, here it's called office, but we call this the new addition and the south wing.
Right. Next slide. So, go ahead, Robyn.
Well, I was just gonna jump in and say, because we have a number of slides here that we're not gonna spend a long time on. And some of you have seen these already, but this was really our attempt to understand the history of these buildings. And it's, it's quite interesting. I mean, starting even with the original high school right here, that's no longer standing. And the fact that this building and this building were both built to respond to it. Really, this is just to give you a sense of the complexity, as you probably, as you well already know, of the different eras of construction coming together. That's it, Alan.
Great. Okay. Keep going to the next slide.
Okay.
Yep. And we also sort of categorized, at least of the grade school, we added all the net in the gross area of all the spaces and did sort of a graphic program. And this is what this represents, and that's in the study as well. But it really, the grade school has many masters, I think, as I referred to in the, in the study. You know, there's the town offices, there's the school offices, there's the daycare, it's used by the high school. And it's used by the community at different levels. And so there's many masters. So one of the things, this is a summary of our capacity and space utilization that we're asked to take a look at, given your current grade configurations at these facilities. So as you look at the top line there, maybe, Robyn, you can kind of do the bouncing ball thing a little bit. There's the existing gross square footage that we took up. If you look over at the grade school, it's 68,430. So we know there's more square footage in that facility, but that's how much space is actually being used by the grade school for pre-K through five. So, you know, one of the things that we look at when we try to understand building capacities and enrollments is we look at your enrollment study. You had one that was done by Rebecca Wandel. And so these numbers of current enrollment are from her study. They're not actual numbers taken from Infinite Campus or some other model. These come off.
Right. And just to add that, I think they're, they're a little bit off from Jeff. You and I had a conversation at one point. You gave me numbers. And at the end of the day, we ended up sticking with what the study says. So it may be a few off from who was currently in the building.
Right, right. And I think one of the things that, for instance, Rebecca was doing in her report is she had a total population. I know the pre-K is a half-day program. And so she had the full enrollment there. So we had to discount what she had there by a few students to really do the analysis. So if we look at the number of students that she had for the current enrollment, and you can see how much square footage per student in the facilities are being used for the grade school. Given your enrollment, that's 150 square feet gross square foot per student. The middle school, 278, and the high school, 290. Okay? Then we look at, if we're doing a new project or we're doing a major investment in any school project, we really, part of the benchmark is its permanent of education. They, they have us look 10 years out. That's what their target is. So we took the 28, 29 enrollment projection. Those are the numbers from the study, 415, 195, and 253. And for, and for the most part, they're, they're pretty mu, if you look at all the enrollments, I think they appear to be pretty much flat. They stay the same. In some instances, they dip a little bit. The next thing we, we have on here is the gross square foot per student that we used in the analysis and, or what DOE would look at. If you look at their chart, they have recommended square footages for new school construction. That's their benchmark. And that's what we've used. But the median that they use is for 600 students. And you can see that that would be, they would allow 140 square foot per student for an elementary school. As the square footage gets less than 600 students, that square foot per student goes up because gyms usually stay the same size. A lot of the core things stay the same size and could actually serve more students. So actually, if you, those are the numbers that we used in sort of extrapolating their graph. Which, which if you do that, that means the capacity on the grade school, for instance, would be 472 students. If you look at the gross minus square footage that exists right now, and you use the DOE's numbers. So there's, you know, down at the bottom, we say additional enrollment capacity. If you look at the analysis that way, that's how that would stack up. And then you can see the middle school, and then you can see the high school. This is just one way that we look at capacities and enrollments and try to get the right size and fit for an educational program. The other thing we looked at was the core programming areas and what they will support. And so we did the same thing on the three columns on the right. We took the existing gym on the grade school. They're using the high school. So there's a lot of the old high school gyms. So there's a lot of square footage there. If we were to do a multipurpose space or a gym for an elementary school this size, the state would allow 2,400 square feet. So there's way extra capacity there, and it skews the numbers when we look at it. The middle school, their gym is, is a little bit larger than what the state would provide. And I thought what, what was interesting when we were touring that the gym, well, I was gonna go to the kitchen. I'm getting ahead of myself. But the high school, the gym is at 10,000 square feet roughly. And we'd be looking at a 5,000 square feet if we're doing a new, a new project. So those numbers kind of skew the square footage per student that are off from what the recommended guidelines were. But it also tells the story that the school has capacity for more students without expanding it. Take, for instance, the cafeteria. The cafeteria at the grade school is a little bit larger than what the state would support. And the, and the middle school has a lot more space in the cafeteria than what would be supported. And that's based on three serpents. And then you can see the high school, it's a little bit less than what we would expect out of the DOE program recommendations. I thought what was interesting in the kitchen, you know, we went to the grade school and the kitchen is tiny, tiny. And the cafeteria, you can see that things has kind of squirted out into the cafeteria, literally. But the existing kitchen is like 550 square feet. And for a school this population, you would need 1,400 square feet to really provide a food service program adequately. Or that's what they would provide for square footage. When you look at the middle school, the middle school's kitchen is very large, in contrast to the grade school, 2,700 square feet. And for a school that size, the DOE standard kitchen would be less than that, much less than that. So there's lots of capacity in the middle school kitchen that we see. And then you see over to the right, the high school, the existing kitchen is a little bit larger than what we would see if we asked the state to support a new program. And then we look at the library or learning commons, if you will. Same thing, the grade school, a little bit less than 2,000 that the state would support. The middle school, just about right on. And then the high school has substantially more in the library, really. Sort of a just, just more than what the state would see as a learning commons kind of program. So that's one of, those are two ways in which we look at the overall utilization and what's happening with an educational program and where we see differences or they could be opportunities as well. Next slide. Whoops.
Hang on. Let's see. Oh, hang on. I'm combining technologies here, and it's not working. Eraser.
Oh, that's okay. We'll, we'll type it up. So what we'd like to do is, we'd like to talk about the grade school specifically, about the systems and things that we saw and going through the school. And I'm just gonna ask, we'll start with Bob. And they're just gonna go through the north, the new addition and the south wing, and talk about all the systems. But we'll flip through it and then we'll probably come back to it. So we've organized these on spreadsheets, which weren't attached in the program. But we will make these part of the, excuse me, the study when we actually have hard copies made. So one of the things is, when we look at these buildings, is, you know, typical buildings of this generation, I mean, they last for a long time, but typically a lifespan of 40 years before major systems and codes catch up to you, and they have to be completely replaced. You know, at 20 or 30 years, you start to replace systems. And then at 50, 40, 50 years, you start to look at larger components that affect the whole building. So Bob and I had a chance to walk through and tour all of the grade schools. So I guess at this point, Bob, are you connected?
Yeah. Am I heard? Am I being heard?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
I'm so happy. The first thing is, my name appears here as Finn Curtis, which makes me laugh. Because that's my 10-year-old son. And miraculous things happen when you have kids running around. Yeah, so we, we spent some time touring the schools and I can give a quick overview. Robyn, do we want to integrate this with the spreadsheet or should I just kind of hit the high point?
Yeah, I think so. So I think, so let me just explain the, the, these, let me grab my highlighter. It makes me feel powerful. So we've got architecture, building, enclosure, and interior environment, which is sort of what our group focuses on. Structure, mechanical, and electrical is where we go to our consultants, and then our site consultant comes in later. My thought was that, to keep it from being too many transitions of people, Bob, that you would talk about the enclosure and interior environment of all three schools, all three buildings. I'll just keep, I'll switch the thing, and then we'll go back and do the same for structure and then mechanical and electrical. So that we're not playing musical chairs too much. And those items, sorry, just, just those items, I think we talked about this earlier, highlighted in yellow are the ones that we've identified as sort of top-tier needing to be addressed or of greater concern, to bring them to your attention.
Robyn, why don't you go over the idea of the spreadsheet and how we organize the data if you will?
Sure. Yeah. So you'll see that we've got the component here, like the wall assembly, the veneer, the wall assembly, the, or the building enclosure, the windows. Then we've got a brief description. And then we've got these rankings, condition, life cycle, and urgency. And over here is our key. So condition is a zero through four, from completely failed to excellent and new. Life cycle is everything from new to obsolete. I think probably the vast majority of what we see is either ESL, within the expected service life, or END, nearing the end. And then urgency is the urgency with which this needs to be addressed. And for the most part, I think they're consistent throughout. There might be some that don't follow the same line of thinking. But this is taking much, much nuanced and complex and layered information and trying to just give a very quick look at a, at, at an assessment. I'd say each of these could be discussed in great detail. They are in the report. But we were trying to boil it down to some essential points here.
Yeah, and we've done similar studies for this, to this, for other school departments to help them prioritize what they're gonna spend on capital improvements or help with maintenance plans. And in some cases, as part of the decision about whether to build new or to renovate. So some of these things, the items on the list range from really, really small and focused to things like sealants to larger, larger issues like building-wide systems. And our part of this is the architectural components, which mostly are things like, you know, what keeps the weather out. And we call the building enclosure. And then on the inside, mostly finished material. And then means of egress things, meaning how you get safely out of the building from any point through doors, corridors, stairs, and outside and away from the building. So that's, that's the architectural part, as opposed to the, the engineering parts that are related to that or structure. Obviously, if the structure is damaged, the building doesn't stand up. There's life safety components that are run, that are controlled by the engineers, like fire alarm, fire notification systems, emergency vac systems, emergency lights. And then the mechanical system, obviously, is, is another part. So I'm gonna go through, I guess, some of the architectural components. Generally, taking a step back, I noticed on the previous slide, Al, that the overall footprint of this is like 60-some thousand square feet. Is that correct?
Six.
That's just the school portion.
60, yeah.
The entire grade schools, we toured the entire grade school, which is like 90.
Yep.
The whole complex, the, all of everything that's built at the Highland Avenue site is something like 92,000, 68,000, and some change are being used by the grade school.
Okay. Yeah, and the way we have to look at buildings, I mean, that's a pretty large building, for one thing. And when we look at new buildings, what the building codes allow us to do is they'll regulate how big any floor can be and how, how big the whole building can be, based on the construction type, and what it's built out of, wood or steel or masonry or what have you. And what it's used for, the occupancy classification, like educational occupancy, business occupancy. And it, you know, I'm not exactly sure what the largest single footprint in here. But if you were to, is here, the first floor, second floor. If you were to build a new school without a sprinkler system out of steel, you're basically non-combustible construction, you're only gonna be able to build about 20,000 square foot per floor. So my first observation is, this whole building complex, this basically would be considered a building, is kind of oversized based on what the building code allows you to safely build for new construction. The building code will let you build multiple buildings, meaning you separate them with fire-resistant construction. But with an old building like this, it's really hard to tell what is a reliable fire separation. It's also a little bit hard to tell with old buildings what the construction classification is. And the construction classification is, is the building built with inherently fireproof things like concrete? Is it built by, with inherently fire-resistant things like steel that are protected by spray fireproofing, other things? And the more protective the structure is, the bigger the building can get. You get a building that has been around for 50-some years, it's a little bit hard even to classify what some of these buildings are because they have wood, they have masonry, some of them have been added to, there's small additions, canopies built with wood, interiors are repartitioned, finished materials are changed. So looking at an existing complex like this is, is a little bit tricky, and we get a little bit nervous about fire separation. Generally, the term is life safety, meaning the safety of the kids and the staff or whoever's in the building, and how they get out of the building. And you also get bonuses in the codes for fire suppression or sprinkler systems. There's actually a, if you're allowed to build a 10,000-square-foot building, if you put a sprinkler system in it, you get to add twice again the amount of allowable area. So if you were to say, I want to build a building that's 1,000 square feet, no sprinkler, it can be 1,000 square feet. If you put a sprinkler system in it, it can be 3,000 square feet. And the trade-off always is the safety, if you put in a fire suppression system, a sprinkler system, the building is considered generally a lot safer for the occupants. And so the fire separations within the building become less important. And so in, in, in codes, there's two paths. You either make a safe building by separating a lot of things with fire-resistant construction, like there's a requirement for a fire rating of corridors. There'll be a requirement for building a one-hour fire-rated enclosure around a big storeroom or a large electrical room or a sprinkler pump room or any sort of hazardous occupancy, a chem lab or something. You put a sprinkler system in that building, all of a sudden, the requirements back right off. Oh, you have a sprinkler system, the building's real safe. The fire separations are way less important. So we look at an old building like this, this building, as far as we know, Al, is not, does not have a fire suppression system with the exception of the addition, like the 2000 area. Yeah, which is a good thing. It's a good thing to have. But what it does is it puts a lot of pressure on what we hope are fire-resistant assemblies and fire separation assemblies. Like any part of this school or any part of this building that is not protected by a sprinkler is supposed to have one-hour fire-rated corridors. And you look at a corridor that is 40, 50 years old, you think, gosh, it's made out of CMU, that's good. Has openings in it, has doors in it. Are those doors fire-rated? Gee, somebody came and put wires for communication through here 10 years ago. Did they seal up the holes? Did somebody put exhaust ducts through here or pipes or what have you, conduits? And so the reason I'm, I'm spending so much time with life safety is one of the biggest observations we have here is the building basically is not protected by a fire separation system. Therefore, that puts more stress or we rely more for safety on fire separations.
I mean, it doesn't have a sprinkler system.
It does not have a sprinkler system, pardon me. We rely on those separation systems. And then again, because it's an old building, you know, that can be problematic. So I think generally, number one on our list of deficiencies or problems is a lack of fire separation. I'm sorry, of sprinkler system or fire suppression system. So I sort of try to start with the big stuff first. We do get down to very small minutia. The other general problem we observed on the site was basically water management. You get a lot of really cool-looking but very complicated roofs that come together. You've got a lot of, you know, possibly around the front of the building, some drainage issues. And some of those are damaged based on water management or how the water gets off the building, how it gets away from the building. And the other of the big three things, I think I talked to Alan Robyn about, was basically kind of a program. You have a building that is basically shared, and I know there are separated root, travel routes through it. But you've got kids of all ages, you've got adults, you got high school kids coming in in cars. You got public, public coming in. And there's just some unease about mixing populations these days in a, in a grade school situation. So it's outside of my area a little bit. So, you know, Al, sorry about that. But all these things work together. And those are like the, the big three observations that I left with here. So that being said, shall I start moving through the building or you wanna?
Well, I was gonna say, I think that's fairly consistent. So you guys will see, we have a spreadsheet like this for the new addition. It's got less yellow because it's newer. And then we have one for the south wing, which it's interesting that the north wing has the most yellow. I think those observations are consistent throughout, correct, Bob? I mean, those, those themes run throughout.
Yes. Yeah, it, it generally, and since we have every era of construction, you know, between 1950s and, and today, or between 50s and 2000, the thinking about building closures, fire separation, and how you build a building changed drastically. And it looks like that there's been a, a good, good faith effort and a good job done to maintain things in this building. Like, you know, we're impressed by the door hardware and the exterior doors. Everything seems to function. It, it, it seems to be very few problems. You're getting out of the building, lots of opportunities to get in and out of the building. But, you know, that being said, you, you look at walls that are basically built in the 1950s that are solid masonry walls, the resistance to thermal transfer, any solid masonry wall is not much. And so what we see is a lot of original 1950s-era construction that is strong and durable, that could stand to be improved a little bit by, you know, repointing or repair of joints or could stand to be improved in terms of sealants, you know, to, to keep water from getting into it. But, you know, probably, it's, you know, But, you know, probably it's, you know, it'll probably last a hundred years. It's like Roman ruins, you know, the solid masonry walls will last forever. However, uh, you try to heat them or you try to change them, sometimes you're putting holes in them, openings in them. You, you can, you run into difficulties. So we have everything from, um, a lot of original solid masonry bearing wall. The original high school or the south wing was re-clad in two thousand or was reskinned, right, Robin? With an, we're calling it overlay, which is very interesting. The overlay.
Curtain wall, right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, by the way, flip ahead to some photos of this just while you're talking, just for context.
We, we're just looking at the original walls of the, of the original high school, right, Rob? It looks like Unum in Portland. It is a glass.
Oh, yeah, that's pretty cool.
Glass and aluminum or glass and something, steel or even wood curtain wall, very corporate looking. Uh, and but that, and that is, is, was very fifties modern, very stylish, very nice. But it was just not very good for, uh, retaining heat and controlling heat. So in two thousand, um, one of our fellow architects came through and basically built a brand new wall on the two long walls outside of this. And, yeah, they put in, uh, a brick, brick veneer and they put in this green composite metal siding that is one of the items you see on our list as at the end of its service life that's failing. This is an example of a building that was, was good in its time and it was revived, uh, forty-five years later. And now we're coming back to it twenty years later and looking at some failures or, or materials that are ended their, at the end of their service life. So.
I dare say, I can just add to that, Bob, without going off to. The, the building enclosure system that was put in in the year two thousand, when they did this, is actually a system that, that we don't use anymore. It's no longer permitted by the energy code.
Exactly, yes.
It was what was done at the time, but it's just interesting how our understanding evolves and it's, it's not done anymore.
And what we saw, yeah, we were reviewing the drawings for the, for the overlay on the original high school or the south wing. And the, the addition, the connector was constructed at the same time, right, Robin?
Correct, yeah.
And they were both, I mean, everybody was doing it in two thousand. They're both built with steel studs with, uh, bad insulation between the studs, with like you'd build a house out of two by, two by sixes, except they used steel. And the problem with steel, as we've learned in the last twenty years, that's insulated between steel members, is it's a horrible thermal bridge. And it's an invitation to condensation at all the wrong places. It's an invitation to water inside your wall. And there's nothing unusual about this. I, we all design many buildings like this until we learn better. And, and the catchphrase now is continuous insulation. That basically keeps the metal studs, which are highly conductive or responsible for a lot of heat loss uh, on the warm side of the insulation. So, yeah, there was a great improvement between the original curtain wall and this overlay. However, we suspect, um, you know, that, that it is not functioning as well as it could in terms of thermal efficiency, in terms of heat loss, and possibly there might be condensation or other things going on in there, uh, that we don't know about. So that's a good example of like how thinking changes and how the buildings change over the life of a building. And a lot of this green infill, we think was done at the same, uh, time. We're looking at the, uh, north wing on the right. Is that correct, Robin, going down the hill?
Yeah, well, here's the old gem, but, but on the, yeah, on the left hand. It looks like they read, they did this cladding project at the same time they built the two thousand edition. At least the drawings are combined.
And we see, uh, uh, many, many, many buildings in Maine. Schools of this era were built with solid masonry end walls and they were built with large, large, large window openings as if it was Southern California. And you'll see a lot of buildings like all these buildings where those very large openings have been infilled with various materials, studs and windows. Discrete windows replace, uh, the original giant windows uh, as a, a, attempt to, um, make a more comfortable and energy efficient environment. So there's some, some close-up shots of the, um, the overlay on the original high school, we're calling the south wing, where the Tyvek, which is the water weather resistance barrier, which is probably, I think that's right on, uh, plywood sheeting, we think. I can't remember, plywood gypsum sheeting. Um, and that material itself, the siding, isn't like a metal or vinyl. It actually is a wood material that you see in the middle shot. It's a wood composite material with a pre-finish on it, so you don't have to ever paint it, which was wonderful, but it has a service life of about twenty years. And, um, lo and behold, twenty years later, it's taking up a lot of water. So it's holding water where water doesn't want to be and potentially could be contributing to damage within the wall. So some of the comments you're going to see are like, we observe this failure of a cladding material that certainly needs to be replaced. However, some selective demolition or further exploration is required to find out what's going on behind that. Is it just the material decaying or is it, um, uh, invitation to more water infiltration, which may have damaged sheathing, which may have damaged bad insulation between the studs. So, you know, walking around and taking photographs, we can make observations and we can make a guess. And the next step, in a lot of cases in our matrix is a suggestion for further, um, further investigation.
Thanks, Bob. I, I think that, that, I think that, in my mind, that's covers all three enough that, that we don't need to go through each individual spreadsheet.
We're, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna append these spreadsheets to the study itself, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Card copies, these will all be part of that. Yeah, I think that was significant, actually. Uh, we didn't have to do any destructive testing. It had already been done for us. We could, we could look right in there. And I, I think eventually what happens with these systems is what Bob pointed out is they, uh, they start to cause indoor air quality problems and, and mold on the outside of the building because it's like holding a sponge up to the outside of the building. Uh, it's not, it's not breathable, um, and it's, it's getting to the inside of the walls. So that's something that does have to be addressed in the short term.
The, the other general category just quickly is accessibility. And we know that you've made some, that is an architectural concern. We see the, uh, lifts that have been put in, there's a ramp in the lobby in front of the gym, all, all real good faith efforts to make the, um, facility accessible. Um, and that goes from the large right down to the small, you know, with the, can you get into the building, move around the building? Can you use the sinks and the doorknobs and the toilets? And again, there's a variety of, you know, repairs have been made, upgrades have been made, but there isn't like a uniform accessibility, which is always something that we strive to, to achieve in, in projects where we're feasible. We want to make it usable by pretty much every student with different needs or staff or, or member of the public. It's another, uh, component of architectural.
Alan, are you, do you want to talk about structure? I don't think Bill was able to join us.
Well, and, and Bob can be part of this as well. But we, we kind of poked around all over the building. And I think there's, I think one of the things with a complex like this that you'll see in the report is that there are many typologies, you know, from load bearing masonry to field form wood trusses to, uh, steel's trusses within wood infill, uh, and they all have varying layers of, uh, protection. Is that the right, uh, sort of classification, Bob, or description?
Yeah, sure. You're right, different characteristics, both structurally and fire, uh, fire performance.
Right, and how they work thermally. So we know there's marginal insulation on this, this complex of buildings. If you were to bring this up to me, the energy codes, you would have to do a full-blown, uh, structural analysis of the roof. Um, and, uh, um, Bill Fosher, who looked at the structural with us, is, is, is saying that we're proud, and this is no surprise, that we would have to reinforce all of these roofs to be able to accommodate that. To, to a large extent, I mean, these are, you, you just can't get an R thirty roof system, uh, throughout.
Can I just jump in very quickly and explain for, for the uninitiated that when you, most of these roofs have no insulation. It's a great place to put insulation. But when you add insulation to a roof, you often, for older buildings, have to upgrade the structure because the roof actually begins to hold more snow because it's not leaking hot air anymore. So heavy snow is sitting on the roof longer, so therefore the roof structure has to be upgraded. It's, it's sort of, it's a little counterintuitive at first, but that's, that's why it becomes a bit of a can of worms when we look at roof upgrades as opposed to just, great, re-roof it and, and add some insulation while we have a chance.
It's less of a concern. A lot of your roofs are hipged roofs or sloping roofs, which aren't going to hold water. And they're insulated inside at the, at this, like the ceiling joist level, right? The flat roofs, like the south, yeah, the new building is, yeah. And then we've, we've, we hear from visiting that there's been some questions or concerns about cold spots and lack of good insulation in that addition, which is the most modern of the building. And we saw that there was some attempt to, um, fix that with some spray foam insulation. And, you know, the problem is you start repairing things bit by bit. You maybe lose sight of the original concept of how things were supposed to work. Like a lot of times roofs have to be ventilated. You know, air in, air out, keeps it dry, um, and efficient. But, yeah, as, as Rob was saying, I mean, the, the Department of Education will, when you replace a flat roof or a low slope roof, like on the south wing and the connector of the gym, uh, they really encourage you to increase insulation. We've talked to them about that, right, Robin? They, they, they don't actually come out and say it, but they strongly recommend you do the right thing, which is add insulation. You add insulation, you get more snow sitting up there, as you said. Um, and then we're required to do structural analysis. That building, the south wing, has tectum, uh, roof deck. It doesn't have corrugated steel deck. That was a wonder product from the fifties. We see it all the time. It's a semititious structural deck. It's similar to what we use for sound control now in gyms. You go in the wall, uh, gyms, it looks like spaghetti and glue. That, that's a structural member and it's, it's, it's considered non-combustible. It's sort of semi-combustible. But it doesn't have a lot of the structural characteristics that they need now for lateral force resistance. I learned that from talking to Bill. I don't know that, but. But it's, it's a common, it's a common dynamic with these schools. This, the, this, the roof structure is designed per nineteen fifty standards. We want to load more insulation on it. You can take more snow load, therefore we have to upgrade the roof. So it's always something to take into account when you have an older building. The roof may not be leaking, it may not be sagging, but in order to improve it in other ways, um, you may trigger structural improvements.
I want to make sure we get on to the, the MEP piece.
Yeah, I was just gonna throw in, there are some other specific things about, uh, foundation cracks. There's a slab settlement near the kitchen, uh, and a few things that, uh, Bill pointed out in his report, in his portion of it. The other thing he did is reference BRAM and, uh, the BRAM stands for Bureau of Real Estate Management. And, uh, that requirement that just, uh, Robin and Bob just talked about, about having a structural evaluation. So, uh, we're just, just put us over on mechanical.
I'd like to do mechanical, yeah.
Okay.
Is Ian able to speak to that? Ian, are you there? I can't see my.
Somebody muted me.
Well, maybe it's because you're in Florida.
Nothing personal.
Fabulous location.
Yeah, it's funny, a little story. I actually went to, uh, went through grade school in fourth grade and half a fifth grade many years ago. Yeah, rather than talk about each, you know, the, the north wing, south wing and new addition, I think I'm gonna look at it from a standpoint of heating, air conditioning, ventilating, plumbing and fire protection. Real brief overview, um, for, for the heating side, there's one big oil tank that the entire building uses. And there's two separate boiler plants that use that oil to, to make hot water and that hot water's pumped throughout the buildings for heating. And that's, those systems are, are aging. Like, you know, they're, they're in okay condition, but, you know, they're, they're starting to show their age. One big deficiency that, that Bob already alluded to was a, was a sprinkler system. We took a look at that and it only exists in the, in the new addition. Um, so it's, most modern schools, you know, are, they're required to be sprinkled and this, this, these are not. Ventilation is, you know, we need fresh air in our buildings to be healthy and safe. I think about even more now in the COVID nineteen times to have good fresh air. And it, it's, it's, it's a mixed bag. The north wing, which is the original, I'm sorry, the south wing, which is the original high school, has hardly any fresh air. The new addition has some through the air handling units and the north wing has some, these, these, uh, classroom unit ventilators, which have the ability to bring in fresh air if they're set up properly. Um, so that, that's one of the big things that caught our eye was, uh, lack of proper ventilation, fresh air. We looked briefly at the plumbing. I mean, the, the plumbing fixtures in general, I mean, it's hard to see, look inside of pipes to see how corroded they are. But, you know, the, the building's showing its age and, and these types of systems tend to get heavy and heavy replacements or heavy renovations in the context of an architectural renovation, you know, a larger building project. So I think that's, that's it. Notchell, heating, well, heating, air conditioning, ventilating, plumbing, fire protection, air conditioning, there's not too much scattered around. There's a couple spotty, uh, couple areas that have air conditioning. We're still in the superintendent's office area, but most educational spaces do not have it. But that's, you know, makes a better learning environment.
We know there's a couple ERVs that sit on the roof, uh, between the old, uh, old high school gym and that wing that are sitting on the roof and they've never been attached.
Well, there was a large ventilation unit that was installed to, to serve the old high school and it never got hooked up. Um, perhaps that could be, you know, rejuvenated and, and used. That's the view from thirty thousand feet.
Yep, those are the two biggies.
So it, so it has a big oil tank. Is there a single central boiler or are there multiple systems?
Well, there's, there's, yeah, there's a, a single oil tank and there's two separate boiler plants. One in the north wing and one in the south wing. Each of them has a single boiler. So if that boiler goes down, you don't have heat. It'd be nice if they could, I mean, ideally, a, a school like this would have a single boiler plant with, with two or three boilers. So there's, so there'd be some redundancy. You know, you wouldn't have all your eggs in one basket. But, uh, yeah. Single oil tank underground.
So I think there's some, uh, there's a lot of synchronicities between, uh, systems as well. And maybe this is probably a good segue for Brian to talk about electrical systems. If Brian, are you still there?
Yep, I am here.
Okay.
All right, all right. Hi, everyone. Uh, electrical, yeah, electrical, there are a couple of things that we look at. First and foremost, I look at, and it's already been spoken to, rather heavily is look at life safety, looking at egress lighting, looking at exit signs, looking at the fire alarm system. And over the years, as this building has been pieced together, there have been different portions of the fire alarm system addressed. Typically in a building where we don't have a sprinkler system, we are going to want to cover those remaining areas fully with smoke detection, uh, devices. And the buildings may or may not be completely covered today. You know, wasn't able to really take that, um, full, um, small grain kind of approach to looking at where every single device is to see if we had coverage. However, I would, I would recommend a, a good fire alarm system review that would go over that for the entire building complex so that we can see where all the pieces are and how well they are connected together and where there might be holes, um, in the system that might need a better addressing. Like, for example, like the, the gymnasium, the audible sound devices for the horn strobes of fire alarm system appear inadequate. If you were to use that as a, um, as a assembly hall and you have a lot of people in there, it gets a lot noisier. It doesn't appear that the stage, um, has a fire separation system to drop a curtain or to detect smoke on, from the stage, uh, area to the seating area, things of that nature. So I would certainly recommend, uh, a complete fire safety, uh, egress study, trying to look at the building as a whole to, to see where upgrades are, are needed. Then we look at, my next thing I like to look at is the service size and the capacity. Does it have the room to grow? Does it have the capabilities to support the program, um, now and in the future? And as, as Ian spoke about ventilation, um, concerns, if, if the building is lacking ventilation that you might have in building today, um, as, as was before, a lot of these systems were appropriate when the building was built and they're not quite as appropriate today. The, the service size to this building would not necessarily support, um, an appropriate HVAC upgrade. Uh, it's a, it's a rather small service. It's a, it's, it's only three hundred KVA transformer out back. And for a square footage of this building, that probably only gives you about, uh, a little over three watts a square foot, um, which is probably about a third of what I would. Which is probably about a third of what I would want in a new building of this type. So the, the service is definitely undersized for the capabilities of, of what you would want to turn the building into. It, it would be working today because we don't have a lot of those systems in place demanding the, the energy that they have. So that's the other side I look at it, um, power distribution and then even just the power distribution equipment in this building. The newest distribution equipment in this building is all in good shape. And it looks great. The Siemens equipment that was put in the administration wing, the, the north wing there. But oddly enough, it's 2003 when it was put in. It's 17 years ago. I know time goes by a little quick. Didn't seem like 2020 was here as quick as it is, but most electrical equipment you start looking at concern for replacement and, and availability of parts when you get over 20 years old. Given now the, the south wing, uh, the equipment in there is definitely be well, well beyond its, its useful life and, and well beyond its age. And that's basically where the main service comes in to this building. It appears that the south wing might be double tapped off the utility transformer. So that there are two feeds coming out, one to the south wing, one to the north wing. However, upgrading the service and upgrading a head end equipment. And then even on a service upgrade, I might look at providing this building at a higher voltage at 277 40 volt to help support larger loads like an elevator or two or the mechanical loads. And be able to get smaller wire further because it's larger voltage, so it's smaller impacity. So service upgrade, fire alarm, safety review, and then lastly, um, the building is predominantly, if not completely fluorescent lighting. I would certainly recommend for performance of light fixtures from glare control to comfort level to color renditioning. To energy savings, a full LED upgrade to this building to from everything from the exit signs all the way through changing LED. And then just speaking about one, one last quick thing I'll say is, um, on life safety, everything is done with battery power. If you have the battery powered EBU's and the battery powered exit signs right now, so there's no generation in this building, no standby power. So if we were to lose power, we do have the appropriate code time duration, 90 minutes of emergency power to get out of the building. But we won't have standby power to say support the heating system in a prolonged outage so that we prevent freeze ups or, or what have you. So considering standby power might be a really good thing to, to look at too.
Well, thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
So I, I guess we should just, wanna move right to the site?
Let's go right to the site, yeah. Andy, are you with us?
I am. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Good, good. So I split the site up into the categories that we normally, uh, look at as far as design and, um, and maintenance. And I'll start off with access and parking. The good news here is that the road that runs through the site, Townall Lane, is actually in relatively good condition. The bad news is that's about the only paving on the site that is in good condition. So just running through some of the items here, the service area in the back. And this is, this is an item where, where they'll come up again in, in further discussions, both about this site, the high school, middle school site and potential future options. But what we try and do with access to sites and particularly service areas is we try and separate the traffic stream. So we try and keep service areas and service traffic away from everything else. Now, the service area in, in the grade school is at the rear of the school. The access is very tight, very steep. I wouldn't like to be the guy who has to drive a fire truck up that hill to try and get to the sprinkler connection. Uh, and of course it conflicts with the hard play area and is right next to the soft play area out at the back of the school. So that is not an ideal situation. The paving, as I said, throughout the site, including the parking, is all well beyond its service life. And to the point where, you know, th- there's really not a good option to patch or repair the paving at this point. This would be a total reconstruction of the paved areas of the site. Uh, the pedestrian access is relatively good at the front of the school. There's, there's a concrete error in the front of the school, which is in serviceable condition. And the remainder, the paved areas are not in great condition. And there are lots of steep slopes leading out the back of the school. There are some stairs that don't have railings on them, that should really have railings on them. There are sidewalk entries towards the building that have fairly steep slopes off the edges of them, which would normally, we would normally require a railing along those as a safety precaution. The other thing at the front of the school, the drop off facilities, and, and this is another item that we come across quite a lot, both in old and new schools. And it goes down again to the traffic separation idea. Uh, at the front of the school, uh, we understand there's been some recent improvements to that with the bus loop that was put in. And the parent drop off occurs in the street. The tough thing about that is then the, the drop off that occurs in the street, everybody who gets out the car has to cross the bus loop to get to the school, which again is not ideal. And the pavement issues exacerbate that because one of the biggest pavement issues you'll see on the site at the front of the school is associated with the electrical trench, which is heaved quite badly right next to the handicap parking space and right next to the crosswalk that comes from the street into the school. Again, that probably brings the ADA space at the front out of compliance with ADA as well as creating a bit of an issue, a bit of a safety issue for people walking to and from the street there. So generally speaking, the access and the parking and the paving is not in great shape. And would require some pretty major work to, to bring it into good shape. As far as the utilities go, uh, your municipal water and municipal sewer, they both appear to be in relatively good condition. It's a little difficult with underground utilities to assess the condition of those, but they seem to be working fine. I mentioned the electrical service where, uh, where it comes from the street to the school. Uh, that trench is heaved quite badly. It's also, there's, there's a couple of unusual things on the utility side. Both the primary electric and the main heating oil, the fill port is actually at the front of the school. Tank is at the back of the school. So the primary electric and the main feed for the oil tank come under the, the new building connection. That's not something we would typically do in a new school. I mean, you can understand why it's been done. But that's not something we would recommend on a new school. Uh, moving on a little bit to grading and drainage. Grading and drainage is fantastic at the back of the school, but it's so steep at the back of the school that you you really couldn't fail to drain that pretty well. The front does show some, uh, some poor grading and some drainage being trapped against the walls of the building. That's something that could be fixed relatively easily. It would require regrading to pitch further or pitch more positively away from the building. And perhaps some additional drainage inlets and subsurface drainage, just to, just to better take the surface water and the groundwater away from that area, because it does trap against the front of the building at the moment. As far as the outdoor play areas go, the hard play area suffers from the same issue, the same pavement issues, the other pavement areas. Pavement is not in great shape. Soft play area is in good shape, is relatively flat. And does provide a pretty good, uh, pretty good and serviceable play area. The athletic field similarly, the, the fields themselves are in good shape. The access to the fields is not in great shape. There are two areas, both on the high school football field and on the baseball field where the access down the slope has been formed with, uh, old railroad ties, old timbers. Again, when it was done, it was probably a good idea. In the condition that they're in right now, it is not a good idea. It's not very safe. They have a, a relatively slippery surface. Steps leading down there are uneven and there's no rails on the steps. So that is, uh, that's, that presents a, a safety issue. The last thing that I have on my list is ADA. And, and obviously with a site like this, that is as steep as it is, providing good accessibility to and from a building is a major challenge. And it would be a major challenge to improve it, frankly, given the grades around the building. As I said before, there's lots of steep slopes. There are lots of steps leading out the back of the building. The front of the building is relatively flat and, and there's good access there, but the sides and the rear, it's, um, the access is poor and, and it would be difficult to, to upgrade that to get true accessibility to the rear of the building. The one last point I have is on security and this, this is an item which really goes back to the school board, the principals and the school's take on security. And it differs widely in, in different sites that we've seen. From schools that are designed almost to what we call, or, or what are, what are presented as forced protection standards for military facilities. Where the front entrance is protected, not necessarily with hardscape protection. But there's an inability for people to drive too close to entrances. There's a lot of focus on visibility around entrances for security issues. And there is perimeter controls around it throughout the site. So basically, you know, you look at different means, whether it's landscaping or fencing, to prevent unauthorized access to the site. That I say is, is a district by district issue and different districts take a very different take on that. So it's on the spreadsheet just because it's something that, that if you were looking at making renovations to the school or potentially any new school building, it's something that we would put, we would put some focus on discussion of what your requirements, what you see the requirements as being and how we could incorporate them into a good design. Read it from the site.
Great. Thanks, Andy. So I'd like to, uh, can I move into the energy a little bit while Ian's here or?
I'm gonna take us on a quick tour through some photographs.
Virtual tour.
Lot of stuff we've talked about. A lot of these are from our community forum. Here you go.
Right, so, um, well, we, uh, we did a snapshot of energy and energy usage. And Ian and I have talked a little bit about this, but as things have worked through the world of sustainability and the cost of energy, we started to focus on what is called energy use intensity. Which is really a measure of, uh, energy being used per square foot of building. And it isn't just reporting out the cost. Costs change every year. They change every week. They change every month. So what we like to look at is the actual amount of energy being used per square foot. And it's called the energy use intensity. It's measured by KBTUs per gross square foot per building per year. And, um, that is just one of the, that's just the way we're looking at it now in terms of high performance design. So what you're seeing here on this, this slide is, um, there's a couple, uh, case studies here. One, and they're both under construction, by the way, and they're both, these are right from, directly from our energy model. But, um, Caribou Community School, it's about 120,000 square feet. We did an energy model, the, uh, EUI on the baseline, that net code and Asher at 90.1 was 48. And the client was very interested in moving that closer, uh, to, to a more high performance area, including triple triple paying glazing, some additional insulation and other measures. And we're able to get that projected EUI to 37. Uh, another project that's under construction and just finishing up is, uh, Mount Airy at High School. Building about the same size, uh, we had a base, baseline EUI of 32. And we're looking to reach a high performance level of EUI of 22. So what does this all mean as, as we look at this? And, and Ian, you can just jump in at any place, but one of the things that we look at is when somebody says, oh, they've got a net zero building. We look at an EUI, it's somewhere between 0 and 20. It's approaching, uh, net zero. And a lot of times that includes renewables. On Mount Airy at High School, we're gonna have PBs on the roof. That's gonna be a huge contribution to the overall performance and what they're trying to do. They also had added insulation. But one of the things in the energy model that informs how these buildings work is this energy horizon. How much is the ventilation using? How much is it heating? How much is it cooling? What is the plug load? I think Brian referred to, uh, early on that our buildings, the plug load has gotten much greater. As we've started to see all these personal devices, especially at the high and, you know, adequate ventilation meeting current codes. So these buildings that I just cited here, all are, are state of the art, meet, you know, all the ventilation requirements, all of that. And they're achieving those little levels. So approaching that zero was between 0 and 20 EUI. If we just met Ash Ray and did a building with a few little add-ons and working with the Department of Education, what they would support without, uh, taking on a huge amount of extra effort, we're seeing buildings in the 20 to 30 EUI. Typical, a typical DOE project without any add-ons or extra jimmys, if you will. Uh, we're seeing an EUI of anywhere between 30 and 40. All of those three levels are are great, uh, great buildings, very good, high performance and, uh, I, I think some of the energy costs that we're seeing, if we translated those into energy costs, which is a dangerous thing to do, is as well below a dollar a square foot to run these buildings, all included. Fuel, uh, electricity, uh, plug load, lighting, everything. So we added up all your utility costs and, um, one of the things that was difficult was really I, I guess there were some bumps in the data and the only year that we really had it consistent across the board was 2019. So we've used 2019 alone to look at the, the grade school and middle school and the high school. This includes their fuel costs, electrical costs. And converting that to an EUI. And you can see that the, um, the, uh, the grade school ends up with an EUI of 68. Wentworth Middle School, 56. And Wentworth High School, 75. And so there's lots of factors that have, that affect how efficient and how well you can do with a high performance building. Hours of operation, amount of technology, uh, iPads, devices, uh, all of that, amount of kitchen equipment, how much of the building is air conditioned, uh, lighting type. And, um, also mechanical ventilation. So those are all things that, in other words, the winter grade school may look okay at 68 EUI. But when you consider that it doesn't have mechanical ventilation or some of these other things, uh, that could tweak that number substantially. The same can be true about Wentworth High School. That has a very, you know, I would say unexpected EUI, given it's probably your newest building in the fleet. But then again, it may be used 24/7. It may be used all weekend, um, and the hours of operation may be quite in excess of what we'd see of a normal building. So, uh, just to give you another benchmark of what these numbers mean in comparison on a national basis. Yeah, we go to, what is it, Energy Star Target Finder? As a basis and, um, right now, they, they sort of, um, this sort of a clearinghouse for data when it comes to schools and high performance. And, um, their current, uh, EU, uh, EUI average is now 56. Okay. So if you averaged all the schools that come into the database across the country, their average EUI is 56. Before that, it was 70. So there has been some really great strides in making our public schools, uh, more high performance. And we're seeing these numbers go down drastically. And the EUI relates to how much you're paying for energy costs and long-term carrying costs for, uh, your facility. Uh, obviously, if you can get down around 20 or 30, uh, EUI, without even looking at the unit of energy, um, cost, you're gonna be, uh, seeing some tremendous savings over, uh, a, a building that is, you know, has an EUI of, uh, uh, over uh, a, a building that is, you know, has an EUI of uh, you know, much greater than that, fifty to seventy.
Yeah, I mean, the short answer is a new modern school will use half or a third of the energy of your current schools.
Right. So that's one of the things that we uh, we look at in going forward. And the other thing with a modern school, well, uh, comparison is you get all the new uh, you get all the new systems, right? You get a new ventilation. You get um, a, a, a great lighting system, LED lighting. Um, I think one of the things that uh, Brian was talking about, pretty soon fluorescent lighting is going to be obsolete. We will not be able to find components and parts uh, to replace that system, let alone the disposal of the uh, the lamps themselves. So um, anyway, that's, that's a little snapshot on energy costs. Like I say, we, we focus on energy use intensity. Um, you could have the same uh, energy use intensity, but have the costs differ from year to year uh, just based on the, on the fact that oil will go up or electrical costs will go up, uh, up or down. So. So that's um, I'm kind of, I'm trying to be cognizant of the time. I want to open it up some, some questions while uh, we have our team here. And uh, I think, Robin, did you have anything else that you wanted to add? We talked about site. We talked about energy costs. We did bring um, some options on the other sites that um, maybe we should just touch on briefly.
Yeah. I guess, I would say maybe we want to get, take some questions or get some feedback and then wait and see um, if we, if we get into that or that might be a part two.
Sure, sure.
Just to be respectful of the board's timeline.
Right, so right now.
Lot of information.
Yep, there is a lot of information, a lot of uh, a lot of things that we touched on. So I guess I'll just, I'll turn it back to uh, the board and um, and entertain questions for our team.
Alan, this is Connie.
Hi Connie.
Hey there. I uh, assume you're going to go through the other two buildings in the fields as part of the presentation tonight?
Uh, yes, the other, the, when the site plans and all of those, yes, we can do that. Would you like me to do that right now? We're going to stop and take some questions and then come back to that, but I'm, I'm comfortable doing that as well.
I just want to make sure you get it all in tonight.
Well, sure, sure. Okay, so let's, let's go over um, let's uh, Robin, why don't we go to the next um?
Sure, up to the site. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, we, we did not do the same sort of deep dive on these buildings. Um, you know, the, the, the focus really was the, the grade school and its conditions. We looked at this site more in terms of what the sites have to offer. We looked at it in terms of that, that capacity analysis that we showed early on, and I can bring that back. And then in terms of, of, because essentially there is capacity up here. These buildings are oversized for the current and predicted populations. We went fairly quickly to very broad brush schematic. How could we add students to this site to get all of the students in the school district up on the site? Take up that extra capacity and what would it take to add? So that's what we'd, we'd be talking about, not a blow-by-blow of all the systems for each of the other buildings at this point.
Right, right. We identified the core areas, what were expandable. Um, and really getting, trying to get an understanding of the capacity. And then we uh, looked at different options of how we could accommodate more program on the site without getting into what I would call concept design. Uh, one of the things we talked about was adding on to the high school a little bit. We haven't shown that diagram. Um, we feel like the best place to add on to the high school is on the end of the uh, two-story uh, classroom wing.
Here.
Uh, right there. Um, you could easily get four classrooms on the end of that without uh, jumping through a lot of hoops. Um, uh, but that's, uh, we really haven't done that diagram on the high school. Uh, but let's talk about what we see on the site. Maybe Andy, you can just sort of share uh, the thinking on these diagrams a little bit of what we.
Yeah, Andy, I've, I've got the diagrams you've, you provided. If you, maybe we just do a very brief blurb on what the concept is.
Yeah, so what we did is we took a look at the site overall. We were actually able to go up to DEP and do some file research on the previous plans for the high school and the previous permitting that was done on the site. Just have a quick look and see if there was any, uh, if there were any critical natural resources that were identified in the previous phases of development of the site that we should be concerned about. Uh, we looked at the topo and we looked at the overall property boundaries. And we identified one area of the site in particular that seemed like the easiest and the most amenable area for future development. And that's the area just, uh, just to the west of the middle school that's shown here. And then what we did is we just went through an exercise, which is really, you should, you should take this for really what it is, which is like a space and analysis study. Which is looking at, if we put a building of X size in this area, what could we fit? And could we reasonably fit a school building program with the associated parking and drop-off areas as we want to design a new school? So we just did some test fits in that area of the site. This is the first of them. You'll see one of the things that I, uh, I was talking about earlier about the separation of traffic streams. And we've colored in purple here, the pedestrian access. And the idea of both of these first two schemes is a new school building west of the middle school. And you'll see there's a separate parent drop-off, there's a separate bus drop-off. The parking is separate from all of that. And as a pedestrian, you could go from the bus drop-off, from a parent drop-off or from the parking without crossing any major traffic lanes. And that's one of the things that we, we try to achieve when we have the space to do it on new schools. And you'll also see the service area to the rear and, and again, separate from all of the other program, like um, program entities. And so this is a, that was a space study of a new school program. Then we started looking at a couple of options for additions to the middle school. This, this is one. And again, um, it's a little tighter in here to try and provide a separate parent loop and bus loop. But this is what we were trying to do with this plan. Again, in purple, the pedestrian lines all shown, connecting directly to the school without crossing any traffic lanes. There, additional parking provided for the additional program that would be associated with the school seems to be about the right number. And then you'll see we've put parking both to the north and to the south and just then reoriented that small softball field that's there. Um, and actually, the orientation we show on this plan is a little better than the one that's there now. Uh, it's not necessarily a big deal for, for grade schools, but um, pointing south is not usually a good idea. Then we looked at a couple of uh, more minimal options for additions to the middle school. And this is just, this takes away the separate loops. So you just, you're left with the same bus parent drop-off loop that you have today. Um, and if that functions accept, acceptably at the moment, then that could be an option. And of course, it saves an awful lot of site work if you simply add the parking to the northeast of the building and then add the addition on the northwest. Uh, so that's the first one of those. Then we looked at an addition on the northeast side with the parking to the south. And again, reorienting the softball fields we've done on the previous option. And providing a bit more of an extended drop-off that's, that's then in front of both of the buildings there. But again, no separate bus and parent drop-off loop on this one. And then one more, isn't it?
Uh, if there is, I don't have it here today. I'm sorry.
It, it was a variation on a theme, but basically it's, so these were explorations of what size additions of buildings or new buildings we thought we could acceptably fit on the site and how that might look using the space that's available.
Right, right. That, that orange footprint represents thirty thousand square feet. Um, and if it was two-story, obviously it would be sixty thousand square feet. But um, typically with uh, school programs, um, two-thirds of the program is on the first floor. One-third is on the second floor. So it just gives you a general idea of uh, you know, without getting into a concept, the level of design, um, just thinking about where things could get placed if you were to work with a middle school.
So that is the end of the slides we've prepared. Um, and a very compressed summary of what's in our report. And I, I think we should go back to questions or areas you'd like to revisit. Again, while we've got our consultants here. Happy to answer anything.
From the other school board members, any questions?
Jenny, I have a question.
Okay, if we can get rid of uh, the thank you and thank you, then I could see faces when they raise their hands.
Sure. Do I stop share?
There we go.
Ha, you did it. Thank you.
I can bring it back if you need it.
Yeah, mistake it.
Um, I just have a question about some of the um, the grounds. And I know in the thing, if I read it correctly, they um, suggested more soil testing and things like that. Um, and I am obviously by no means an expert, but um, we've heard that some of our field facilities really are some of the poorest in the state. Um, and I really didn't get that from the um, study. So I don't know sort of what the difference is and how much. Um, I know there was mention that some things might not have been able to get done because of the uh, COVID nineteen and all that. But I'm just wondering sort of what was done. Um, you know, our softball field is in a marsh. Um, and I know, you know, with snow and stuff like that, it might not have been able, a parent, um, the soccer field and the field hockey fields um, are have some really tough turf. Um, and from my understanding, pretty dangerous conditions. Um, so I'm just wondering what was sort of done to, to look at those.
Well, I can answer. Well, what we did basically when we went to look at the sites is we took an overview of the fields. They, they were actually, they look like they're pretty well-maintained, I have to say. And they're, and they're pretty flat, pretty well-graded. The one thing that we would recommend, we would have wanted to do is to take soil samples. And what we do with those is we send them off to the University of Maine. And it gives an analysis of what, one, what the, the gradation of the soil is. In other words, what the texture of the soil is, whether there's too much clay or too much silt or how sandy the soil is. Uh, but it also gives a, uh, an analysis of the nutrients that are available. And it makes recommendations on that report as to what you might add to make the, to make the field surface perform better as far as grass growth goes. What it, what it doesn't do, and what we'd have to take a deeper dive on is drainage issues. And if there are drainage issues on the fields, there are a, a variety of approaches we could take to address that. I think from just a brief conversation with all the grounds guys up at the high school field, I suspect that the baseball field there is probably overdrained. Um, and I suspect the soil is a little too sandy to, and which will probably lead to bare patches in the grass and not great conditions on the grass. Just from looking at the condition of the field behind the high school, it is very, very flat. And it wouldn't surprise me if that stays wet for an extended period. Um, but I know some of the other fields have drainage in them. I don't know if that one does have drainage in it. Um, again, we want to look at that, see if there is, you know, what sort of drainage system is in there. And depending on that, we could recommend, one, whether, whether we need to do some nutrients or some soil amendments to the fields to make the grass grow better, or whether we need to look at drainage improvements, um, which can be relatively cost-effective. We can put in sand strip drain type drainage systems, relatively cost-effectively that will dramatically improve the drainage on those fields. It, it always tends to be an issue in Maine. A lot of schools now have artificial turf fields. And then when they go to a school, if it isn't on a perfect sandy, well-drained site, they go to a school that has a normal grass field and they just don't get the same level of performance out of it. And that's, as the turf fields have become more prevalent, that tends to kind of raise the bar as, as far as what twenty or thirty years ago would have been a perfectly acceptable field, be it muddy on some days or wet on some days, or maybe, maybe a little bare in patches on some days. The bar has kind of been raised on that now, where the expectations of people are, are that even in early spring, you're going to go to a school in Maine and you're going to, you're going to be able to play in, in April, which is, is tough to do on natural grass.
So Janet, if I could just chip into, we're, we're still going to take soil samples. We're still going to do that as part of our analysis. Okay, so we're still going to look at that. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other school committee members with questions? Ms. Shumway?
Hi, thank you so much for your thorough report and presentation. Um, when I was reviewing the document that you provided to us prior to the, um, this evening, um, you had a list of efforts, as you label them, of things that, that you would recommend be done to the grade school. And I'm getting the sense that in order to take care of all of those areas, that the cost of that is much greater than putting on an addition and creating a grade school, middle school, high school site up on Rambler Road. Am I correct in that assumption? And perhaps you could speak a little bit to what the cost would be in order to improve the grade school to the level it needed to be?
Right, so uh, if the question to us was, gee, we want to keep this school here. We're committed to keeping the school here for the next fifty, sixty years. Um, I think we'd want to look at those systems as I had listed here to do a complete renovation uh, for that continued use. And that would be things like adding a ventilation system, adding a fire, a fully-blown fire protection system, redoing the electrical system and um, you know, continual ADA upgrades. We didn't quantify all the ADA upgrades, uh, but there are a lot of them and most schools can't do them all at the same time. They have to, they have to chip away at them. Um, but I, this list was intended to suggest, these are the things that we would look in a modern school to provide safety in an educational environment, if you want this facility to last another, uh, another, you know, fifty years. Um, it's just at that point where the systems are failing that they need to be uh, replaced. Okay?
So I, I'm sorry. I, I think what Ms. Shumway wants to hear, which is the same thing I want to hear uh, with all the people that we have in attendance, and thank you town council members for uh, being here, is that the recommendation would be to vacate eventually the grade school and build a newer building. And it would make sense to co-locate all of our buildings on a similar campus.
There are a huge amount of efficiencies to be explored there and opportunities. One of the things that we suggested is you have certain capacities on those other two schools, whether it's the kitchen or the gym, um, and having a, a central campus location. Uh, and whether it's, you know, if it's attached to the middle school, if there's a reorganization of high school, there's other opportunities of what is shared that will bring down those numbers of what you'd have to do to accommodate a new grade school at that site of some configuration. If you applied for a, a capital uh, project with the state of Maine, they would have us do a new versus renovation. So they would have us look at what the costs are for renovating this and bringing it up to code versus building a new school. And that would determine, you know, uh, how much funding uh, they would support for a new project. Um, so this is, this uh, provides the groundwork for that. This provides really good groundwork for, to apply uh, with the Department of Education for both revolving renovation funds or if you decide to apply for a new school. Um, so that's if you go a DOE route. Um, that's not to say that you couldn't look at a, a local option. But I think that our team, our gut reaction is that, yes, this is a good candidate. These buildings are old, they're beyond their useful life, the systems are failing, they need to be replaced. These buildings are old, they're beyond their useful life, the systems are failing, they need to be replaced. And to bring it up to current codes, uh, it's a major renovation. And, and that's what would trigger, you know, a structural evaluation, more installation, um, and, and new systems. Yes. So I, I think, yes, I think our recommendation is, yes, there are efficiencies to be had here. In the big scheme of things, these are small schools, okay? They're, they're two hundred students or less, except for the grade school. The grade school is the biggest. The state would never build a school of that size. They would not support that because they are very inefficient. The core requirements on a school that size would support a school that is much larger. Now, you can't do a gym, a gym is a gym, is a gym to some extent. That same gym will serve a, a population that's twice the size. And we tried to make that case and kind of looking at the program. I think the other thing that is in my mind is somebody who designs schools is to look at the educational fit. And we, we talk about educational flexibility as we move forward. As Bob pointed out, we got multiple systems in these buildings. So it's not like if you go to reconfigure the school, it's going to be the same in the north wing as it is in the south wing. One wing is going to have load bearing walls, the other wing is going to have something else, and they're all going to be different. And that triggers, you know, acoustical issues, uh, fire ceilings, fire separation. There, there's lots of things. I, I think, you know, I, I guess we're at that point as a team that, yes, that is our recommendation. You should really explore that. I think there are some opportunities here that you could really, uh, do well in terms of consolidation. Busing, shared spaces, uh, a campus approach to, uh, utilities at some point. There, there's lots of opportunities here.
Alan, if I can just add on to that, because I don't, uh, know. And as you said, if, if you were to apply for a capital project with the state, the first thing we do is a new versus renno analysis. And, and in some ways, we're, we've laid the groundwork. We've done some of that, the basis of that. We've been mindful of that. So I can't tell you which is, which costs more, literally penny for penny. What happens with buildings of this age though, because I don't want to imply that we just build things and leave them after fifty years all the time. But with a, a combination of all the different systems and some deferred maintenance, et cetera, not unusual. You, you end up, a renovation project, it becomes very expensive chasing a lot of things that aren't very fun, to be perfectly honest. And get the envelope in shape, but they don't change the fact that the classrooms aren't sized quite right. They don't suddenly get you a, um, a maker space that, that might be more appropriate to the way groups change now. We see a lot of emphasis now on small group instruction or on flex spaces and on, on things with new modes of, of learning. And so, um, at the end of the day, you're still working with what you have. And that's one of the, the things that I think can be very frustrating. As you pour a lot of money into trying to fix a bunch of different problems. And you're still not actually getting the state of the art educational space that you want at the end of the day.
Thank you. Um, lot of information tonight. Excellent, excellent report. I appreciate it a great deal. And I had a list of questions, most of which have already been answered by your presentation this evening. I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but, um, one question that I have is with the, with the grade school, the underground tank. I know that you didn't study the underground tank, but you can probably just tell me whether or not it has a maximum life set by the state. At which point in time it has to be pulled out. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
I think it's, uh, Brian, maybe you can answer that one a little better. You mean the underground oil tank?
Yes.
That you have on the site there now. Yeah, I mean, part of it is, uh, uh, the, the certainly the condition and, uh, the way it's, uh, set up for spillage, et cetera.
We could, we could take a look at that.
Yeah.
Take a look at the age. A new underground oil storage tank tip, they typically will last thirty years. I don't know the exact age of that. But you, you, you folks might have some records of what was installed and when. That would be the first step and try to dig out those records and find out exactly what that tank is.
I'd, I'd like to know if that's something that we need to anticipate while we wait for the state to put out money. So that we could try for a new facility.
That would definitely make sense to track that down and try to get a sense of its condition.
Right?
We, I'll look through the old drawings and that actually, that's a really good point that I might be jumping ahead here a little bit, so it might be the second conversation. It's a while until a capital project happens, right? Before they're releasing funds, let alone going through the process. So I, I do think sort of what you're getting at is what's pertinent? What do you need to address in the now to ten year range? We've tried to address that in those matrices, but, um, it, it's a good question to be asking. Cause you, wanting a new school and getting into one, don't happen immediately.
The other thing that, that may happen, if I could just jump in on that a little bit, is that there is, and I think I, I, I mentioned this in the, the study. But there's also the state revolving renovation fund, um, that is accessible. And sometimes they make monies available through SREF a, a lot quicker than they do a magic major capital project. So, uh, we can see more money coming out on that in the years to come. And things like, uh, life safety, abatement, uh, those all are very high on the list, the safety.
Indoor air quality.
Right. They're not going to pay for new classrooms, but they certainly, uh, pick up ADA items. They would pick up, uh, a sprinkler system and NFPA thirteen system, uh, you know, those, those kinds of things.
My other question, uh, fast forward to your, um, possible diagrams or suggestions of what could be done up there at the middle school, high school site. And, um, as I looked at the first couple of diagrams, which had, I think, a separate building from the middle school. A separate grade school building from the middle school. We want, um, our students to be able to utilize those common areas that are currently in the middle school. And it looked like with the separate building, it looked like an awkward exit for grade school students to go over and access the common areas in the middle school.
Yeah.
Did I, did I interpret that correctly or?
No, you're absolutely right. We didn't, uh, we didn't take, we didn't get into our concept design where we would knit together. I think that's a, that's really a larger discussion in terms of, uh, you know, uh, there was, uh, mention in the community forum, I think, actually. Where folks really liked the schools having their own autonomy, grade school, middle school, high school. So I think that's part of a larger discussion about how that might happen and how the scale would work and what, uh, areas could be shared. Absolutely. The kitchen could be shared, the cafeteria could be shared, the learning commons could be shared. You know, you might have to do another, uh, multi-purpose room or gym for a grade school size. Okay? So the middle school has its own. So I think it's that kind of discussion that would really make those diagrams a little bit more legit. We put those out there right now just as, uh, you know, what, what if, what, could, could you actually get any more space on the site? And I think, uh, we were surprised because when I first got to the middle school, I thought that was impossible. Cause there were a lot of grades around the middle school. It drops off.
Right.
On, on all sides. So that was the kind of thing that we explored and, um, really didn't take it any further than that because I think there would be, there needs to be some, uh, greater dialogue, I think, about, uh, the educational fit. With, with the community and with the, with the educators.
Yeah, just to, just to add a little bit to that, Al, one of the reasons we didn't explore that any further is that difference in grade between the two sites. And actually where that, on those first two options where we were showing that building. The front entrance to, to a building in that location would be about fifteen feet lower than the entrance to the existing middle school. So there's quite a grade drop off there. It's not to say you couldn't put a structure in there. There was, there was two or two and a half stories that had a connection, you know, up that slope. But it's, it is quite a drop off in grade there.
The other thing to consider with, with, uh, our younger folks accessing those other common areas, of course, is security. There, there could be an argument made that those children should be encased in a structure in order to get from one main building to another.
That, that's why I think Alan was saying it's a bigger conversation. We see that, you know, communities really have to decide about age groups mixing and, and that's, yeah. There's different layers there. I just want to point out that I see a hand from, um, a Daryl Bells.
Yeah, Ms. Bells.
Okay, sorry. Yeah.
That's my husband's name.
Ms. Bells.
My question, my question was on, on the diagrams with the addition. Uh, and I could see where the fields and stuff, and you talked about moving, uh, I think the softball field or something. But was there room for a playground?
What we assumed on, on those addition plans, I don't know if you've got, you probably can't bring them up, can you, Robin?
I can. Yeah, keep talking. Hang on.
So what we were considering there is, is sharing the play area with the existing, the fields at the rear of the existing middle school.
Are you all seeing my screen?
Yeah.
Okay.
There is, so there is space available there. Now, we didn't, we didn't go right through the whole process of, you know, do you want a hard play area and soft play area? And how we divide up those, those fields. But it seems like there are quite good field amenities and quite a lot of space around the existing middle school building. So we think we've got space to work with there. How we configure them exactly in the long run. You know, we really didn't get into that. The reason I, I was specific about moving the softball field was because in two of the options, I was actually placing parking where it is. So I was just doing a quick analysis to see, do we still, do we have room to maintain that field? So you're not losing anything. Um, and it seemed in each, each of the options, we wouldn't be losing any, any large amount of outdoor space with them. Again, how we configure that and, and whether we turn some of it over to soft play or hard play? Or how we would separate grades as far as play areas go, gets a little deeper into the design conversation.
Okay, thank you.
One more question is, I wonder if you would speak to, to this. At the grade school, we have so many different ages of construction that it's hard to have any kind of consistency with HVAC, electricity, roofs, drainage, et cetera. Do we, would you speak to whether it would be encouraged to have a separate new building? Or to add a building to the existing forty-three-year-old middle school?
That's, uh, that's a good question. I think, uh, one of the opportunities with doing a new addition, uh, or a new building project is you get to do the most efficient systems, uh, that weren't available when they did the middle school. But at the same time, um, there may be some efficiencies, whether it's electrical service or, uh, or whatever that might be. There might be some synergies there or efficiencies. But I don't know, maybe, uh, Ian, do you have something to say about that? I, your point is well taken that that's what we're seeing on the existing grade school. There are so many systems that have been patched and workarounds that anytime somebody comes in to work at, work with those, they're, they're doing the same thing going forward. They're doing a patch or a workaround. And at some point, you just start to lose all the efficiency in the world. Um, and Ian, maybe you can comment to, uh, Chairperson Guyer's comment here.
Well, it, it's a little different, difficult not knowing where that addition might be, you know, are you? Is it replacing the north wing or are you tearing down the south wing? Are you adding to the building? Our answer would depend on what was happening architecturally. But certainly there'd be opportunities, I mean, like I had mentioned when I was going over the, the mechanical items that oftentimes mechanical, electrical systems get upgraded in the context of a new building or, or a big addition. It's a good opportunity.
So, um, you are, uh, Chair Guyer, you are responding to the middle school though, right? Adding on to the middle school and what efficiencies.
Right.
Okay, not, not the, uh, grade school.
Right. And, and it, and you made it sound as though there might be some synergy available to the middle school. If we attached a new grade school facility to the middle school.
Yeah, from a, from a boiler, you know, from a, certainly from a program standpoint. If you look at, uh, you know, some of the core areas as I had mentioned. So I think a deeper dive into the individual programs and what the right fit is, I think, would be appropriate to know what spaces can be actually shared. And each community that we've worked with has been different. You know, someone, their, their own identity, some don't have a problem with sharing or having four lunch periods. So, uh, I think there are those questions to be asked about the educational program. But you could see a nurse's clinic, for instance, uh, serving more students, it's probably more efficient. Or a learning commons, uh, approach that has, uh, is programmed to allow the middle schools and the grade school to have their own time and their own spaces. And maybe the new addition of the grade school or the early grades could include, uh, maker spaces or project rooms that the middle school doesn't. So there's, there's synergies that can work, uh, both ways, I think, uh, if you look at the educational program. I think in terms of mechanical and electrical, we just have to do a deeper dive, uh, as Ian had pointed out, uh, how that fits. I do know that we've had some really good luck. We did, um, I shouldn't say good luck, we worked hard. It was, uh, Mount Blue Learning Campus for, uh, Framington. And we did a, we doubled the size of their complex, did a deep energy retrofit, uh, completely re-insulated the buildings, the whole envelope. And we doubled the size of their usable space for what they were spending for utility costs on the original building that had minimal insulation. And, uh, so we can, we can do this. We can, we can really get some really good efficiencies. So when we do the new versus renno and we put together applications for new projects, uh, and when we talk about concept design. We are, we look at operational costs and that's something we did not assess in, in this study. We didn't take and look at all your operational costs across all three buildings to see what you've been spending and what's projected. But when you take the operational costs, and that includes manpower, and you take that and you combine it with energy savings. There's tremendous efficiencies that can be made with our, uh, approaches to building design right now. That, that really starts to support the idea of having, uh, a new school versus trying to, uh, do a makeover on buildings that are past their lifetime. So.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I do have one quick answer to one, one of your questions. Your, I just looked up your oil tank at the grade school and it's nineteen ninety-five. So it's twenty-five years old.
Jenny, I have a question.
Miss Drake it. Thank you for the tank info.
So just to something to think about, and obviously it would take place later as well. But, um, when you're talking about combining some of these and having some of those spaces that could be used, like a gym, a common gym or a common learning commons, um, coming from someone who teaches at a K-eight school. It's very difficult to match some of those schedules. And, um, that's something to think about. And if you look at how the gym is being used now, um, both, if you're talking about, like, if we were to combine middle and grade school. You know, I'm pretty certain those gyms are probably used full-time, all day long. So if you're now going to combine them, then that is going to greatly affect programming. Um, and that is something that is a struggle. One of the biggest struggle in, in my K-eight school. Um, and part of that too is we do share one phys ed teacher, one learning commons teacher. You know, and that might not be the case, so that might help. But, um, it, it is a nightmare. you know, and that might not be the case, so that might help. But it is a nightmare scheduling. So although it might be a great facilities, combining and saving, it really does affect programming greatly. So I just wanted to put that out there before we have those discussions.
Well, I totally agree. That's why we have to have these discussions and we have to talk about the program and the educational fit. We're doing a new pre-K through 8 facility right now in Caribou, actually, for 700 students. And we organized the building in terms of wings, they have their own project rooms, they have some of their own core elements. Each wing actually has its own project room. And one of the things that they decided was to have a multipurpose space and then two gyms. So we have a full gym, we have an auxiliary gym, and we have a multipurpose space that, so that they have program flexibility. And they also use the multipurpose space for queuing for buses and parents and drop off. So I mean, there's all this really good program stuff that we really would have to have some serious discussions. Like you were saying, what makes sense programmatically and what is the right?
Thank you. Who else? Anybody else at all have a question? Seeing none, Superintendent Brown, I guess I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much, Chairperson Guyer.
Can we get rid of the, yes?
I think we can do that. I just want to remind everyone that the second community forum is June 3. It will be an in-person event for 50 people. And we will be taking reservations for that. We'll get this information out soon. For people who aren't able to be in the pack, we will have a Zoom call comparable to the one that we're in right now. But it will be a first attempt to do an in-person meeting. I know some of the administrators have talked, we're happy to give up our seats, so to speak, so that people from the community can actually attend. But again, we'll thank the folks from CHA to come. And I might ask you to kind of skinny down the number of people that you bring so we can get more community members in.
Consultants, stay home.
Right.
Yeah. We'll have big screens set up.
You know, we'll certainly do as much electronic stuff as we can. But this is really an opportunity for the community to hear work that you've seen. And where's Matt? Matt, this has been recorded, right? So if anyone wants to see the pre-show, they can watch this and then see again the community forum on June 3.
Excellent.
Great.
Yep.
Well, thank you. If we're good to sign off with CHA, thank you, folks, again. We appreciate the presentation, the information. And I think we're ready to roll into the regular business meeting.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, folks. That was just excellent.
Okay, thank you. Be safe, be well. Okay.
You, too. Thank you. Okay, and where did Mr. Hodgkin go? There he is. I just wanted, I didn't even see you there until partway through the start of the meeting. So I just wanted to say, oh, there you go. Hello again. You keep moving around on me. Superintendent Brown, any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Committee meetings of April 8 and 15.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Jenny, you got to do a roll.
Oh, I have to call the roll.
Yeah.
Sorry. And I forgot to write it down. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Me, yes. Motion passes unanimously. I'll entertain, whoa, is that, did I skip anything? I'm famous for skipping things. Under Personnel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to move first-year probationary teachers to second-year probationary status. And you can't say so moved, you have to say the whole thing and read the names.
I'll do it. Okay, go ahead. You can do it.
Okay, I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation to move the following teachers from first-year probationary to second-year probationary status. Do I have to read what they're doing, too, or just their names?
Read the whole thing.
Okay. Darcie Adams, Winthrop High School Social Studies teacher. Matthew Anderson, Winthrop High School Math teacher. Ian Blanchard, Winthrop Middle School English Language Arts Reading teacher. Alexis De Scolius, Winthrop Middle School, Winthrop High School Drama and English teacher. Jamie Hayford, Winthrop High School Resource Room teacher. Kristen McLaren, Winthrop High School French teacher. Jeannie Ross, Winthrop Middle School, Winthrop High School Nurse. Julia Thompson, Winthrop Grade School, Grade Four teacher. Kayla Washburn, Winthrop Grade School, Grade One teacher. Michael Griswold, Winthrop Grade School Physical Education teacher. And Melissa Brewer, Winthrop Grade School Nurse.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Bell, Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Sorry, Sue. Me, yes. Motion passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to move second-year probationary teachers to third-year probationary status.
I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation to move the following teachers from second-year probationary teachers to third-year probationary status. Jody Bennett, Winthrop Middle School ELA Reading teacher, English Language Arts. Christine Grant, Winthrop Grade School School Counselor. Melanie Hanwin, Winthrop Grade School Preschool Teacher. Haley McPherson, Winthrop Grade School Grade Three teacher. Jolene Perry, Winthrop Middle School English Language Arts Reading teacher. Allison Stankiewicz, Winthrop Grade School Fourth Grade teacher.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Guyer, yes. Motion passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to move third-year probationary teachers to a continuing contract.
I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation to move third-year probationary teachers to continuing contract. Nicholas Folk, Winthrop Middle School, Winthrop High School Chorus and Music teacher. And Margaret Montcastle, Winthrop High School Art teacher.
Second.
Discussion? I'll call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Me, yes. Motion passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to nominate Mark Campbell as the WHS Winthrop, oh, sorry, Winthrop High School Principal for 2020, 2021.
I move to nominate Mark Campbell as the Winthrop High School Principal for the 2020, 2020, 2021 school year.
Second.
Ms. Shumway, is it okay if I give that second to Ms. Bells?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, Ms. Bells gets the second. Discussion? Seeing none. I will call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Me, yes. Motion passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to nominate Jolene Randall as the Winthrop Grade School Assistant Principal for 2020, 2021.
I move to nominate Jolene Randall as a Winthrop Grade School Assistant Principal for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Guyer, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Resignations. I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Laurie Lemio, Special Education Director, effective June 30, 2020. And if nobody wants to make that motion, we'll move on.
Did you skip Alan?
She did.
She did.
Oh, no. Oh, I did. I already checked her off. I don't know, I can't even remember if I read it or not, I'm sorry.
You didn't read it either.
Okay.
Before we go to Laurie Lemio, let me backtrack.
I just wanted to put Laurie off a little bit longer.
I think we should put her off for a long time, and this is just the start.
Okay.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion to nominate Erin Weeks as the Chef, School Nutrition Director for 2020, 2021.
I move to nominate Erin Weeks as the Chef and School Nutrition Director for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Guyer, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Now I can check it off. Oh, my goodness. Thank you for keeping track of me, folks. Now we'll go to resignations. I'll entertain that motion to accept the resignation of Laurie Lemio, Special Education Director, effective June 30, 2020.
I move to accept with regrets the resignation of Laurie Lemio, Special Director, effective June 30, 2020.
Do we have to second?
No, we can just let this hang, in which case the motion fails.
Yay.
No, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
I have one point to make.
Mr. Petrowski?
She's got to change the real estate sign on her lawn and say that the house comes with foxes.
A lot of foxes.
Lots of foxes.
Okay, I will call, any further discussion? I will call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Yes, reluctantly.
Mr. Petrowski?
With great sadness, yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Guyer? Yes. Motion passes unanimously. I guess she has the right to retire after so many years of very, very fine service to our students. We appreciate your professionalism, your expertise and your skill levels and all that you have contributed to Winthrop Schools. Thank you so much. And we wish you a wonderful, wonderful welcome to be fired.
Thank you very much. I just want to note that all three of my children and my husband graduated from Winthrop High School. I did not. So I look at this as kind of a graduation. So I think I need some sort of diploma or something because I had to join their ranks. But I have so appreciated the support from the Winthrop School community, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I understand you're building a house?
We are, yeah, down in Bristol.
That's very exciting.
Yeah, Dan is down there now. Having the time of his life.
I bet. That's very exciting. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Christine O'Brien, Winthrop High School English teacher, effective the end of the 2019, 2020 school year.
I move to accept the resignation of Christine O'Brien, Winthrop High School English teacher, effective the end of the 2019, 2020 school year.
Second.
Discussion? I'll call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Guyer, yes. And thank you. Please, someone take this to her. We thank her for all that she has contributed to our school system this year. And wish her the best. I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Lisa Marie Johnson, Winthrop High School Guidance Counselor, effective the end of the 2019, 2020 school year.
I move to accept the resignation of Lisa Marie Johnson, Winthrop High School Guidance Counselor, effective the end of 2019, 2020 school year.
Second.
Discussion? I'll call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett? Mr. Petrowski, sorry. Ms. Dykett, stop laughing, won't you?
Sorry.
No, you're not. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. I don't know, Jenna, if I like it that you can hear better than I do.
See? He's not looking that far.
Okay, have I gotten everything before we go to the superintendent report? Did I skip anything? Okay, hearing nothing. Madam Superintendent, it's all yours.
Thank you very much, Chairperson Guyer. I have a few items, and with your indulgence, they're going to take a little longer than I usually do. We are getting close to the end of the year, and there are some fiscal things that I wanted to make you aware of. But first and most importantly, this is the time of year when we celebrate some of the extraordinary people working in our schools. Today is National Nurses Day, and we have two phenomenal school nurses. That was a change that we made this year to bring in actually registered nurses. And the two that we hired have been fabulous. We are so lucky to have Jeannie Ross and Melissa Brewer in our school. So if you have a chance, give them a quick email to thank them for all they've been doing. They've been great counsel during the pandemic that we've been going through. They've made themselves available to families, so they're just extraordinary. It's also the time when we celebrate our educators. And after 35 years or so in schools, I have to say, I've never seen one quite like the one we're living right now. Our teachers and the other educators supporting our kids have been phenomenal. I know that they are doing everything they possibly can to meet the needs of our kids. They Zoom, they email, they call kids on the phone, they reach out in lots of ways that are pretty extraordinary. And in my book, they are just rock stars. They have risen up to extraordinary challenges, and I'm very grateful that we have these folks here in Winthrop. And so I want to say thank you from my office, as well as, I'm sure, from all of the school committee members. And I think we all are looking forward to the end of the year to celebrate these folks and what they have done with our kids. So I, yes, and I see, I see heads applauding. That's awesome. So just a couple of things I wanted to remind you, as far as our enrollment, we're down slightly from April by about four kids to 853. It's not uncommon for the April and early spring counts to be lower than the fall counts. I have certified the April 1 enrollment date to the main DOE, and that will be used to help figure out our general purpose aid allocation for next year. So just as an FYI. So now to roll into finance, we're beginning to figure out what our position is for the end of 2020. And I want to just remind you of a couple of things, and I'm going to go through this article by article. Article one has historically been overspent. It was in 19, that's the audit that we just finished, by about 22,000. In 18, it was closer to 100,000. It was overspent in 17 and 16. Of the majority of this article pertains to salary and benefit costs. We, as you know, we've been paying everyone, and that includes our long-term substitutes, and we will continue to do that right through the end of the current school year that we're in. I have asked my staff to help me figure out what our projected costs are going to be in health insurance as well as salaries. salaries. You may recall that the last payment of the fiscal year, which this year I believe is June 24th, tends to be what I call a superpayment. And it's in that payment that we pay out people either who are leaving, retiring, people can request to have all of their summer pays upfront. And so it's about three times the size of our regular payroll. So we're going to watch to see how close we can guess to bring that in. I would like to have that end in the black this year. That would be a first for a while and I, that's pretty important to me to bring in all of our articles in the black. So that's Article one. Article two, we expect to have a positive balance at the end of June 30. One of the things that we're checking, we're checking right now is we had a number of employees, a lot of the positions in this unit are ed techs and they changed their insurance plans at the beginning of the year, which is different from what we budgeted. So that will impact the budget. We want to see how that ends up. And we have a position that we didn't fill in this article, so that will help. I talked with Special Ed Director Lemieux and we have made all of our quarterly seed payments, so there will be a positive balance on that line. We are still paying all of our out-of-district payments. That was something that the department recommended, Lori supported, so we continued to pay for those placements through the end of the year. So we're going to see where that ends up. In Article four, which is athletics and co-curricular, I think you are aware that we did not pay our spring sports stipends and that will save the district approximately $37,000. We also did not, obviously, we're not paying sports, we didn't run the buses. So that's going to be about another $20,000 for that article. So taken together, it's going to be just under $60,000 for Article four. In Article five, you may recall that back in August, all of our technology people suddenly left us for usually better opportunities than we had here and we scrambled to find a provider. We hired Sierra Communications and with Sierra, we have committed through a contract through the end of June. We, as you know, we did remote learning beginning in March and that stressed our technology lines a little bit more than we anticipated. So we got to figure out what our balances are going to be by the end of the year. One of the things, and I'm going to touch on this a little bit later in my report, is that I think remote learning is going to become the new norm. I, for one, will be very happy to see the death of the snow day. So I think that as we look at what we can provide students with, we're going to see if there are resources this year to give devices to kids. We did get, and Jeff will report on this a little bit later in his report, some devices for the grade school through, and Jeff, I can't see you here, but I don't remember what the, the organization was that gave that to us. See it. Jeff, can you unmute your, your mic?
I think I did now, right?
There you are.
I'm sorry, I was in the wrong corner. It, it just came from DOE. I filled out a survey, next thing I know, they were delivering machines.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have those to put into service. We also have to take a hard look at the devices that are currently in grades three to five, for those of us who helped pass those out that cold Monday back in March. Those devices have been passed down at least twice from the middle school to the grade school and there, we need to take a look at how efficient and dependable they're going to be. So hopefully, there may be balances for that. Joe, do you have a question?
I did. And it's really for both of you and Jeff, weren't these machines and someone's for through Senator King's office?
I don't know that.
I, I'm, I'm not sure. DOE sent out a, a survey back in mid-March, weeks ago, and asked for what the needs might be in your community. I filled it out, not expecting anything, and this last week, they started delivering, so.
Right, well, my, my point is Senator King's office called me, asking me if I had a phone number for you. They couldn't catch you through the regular school number. And so, but, but I, I was a program too. I just knew that they had some relationship to these computers being.
Okay, well. I'm muted, there we go. All right, so back to the, the articles again. Article six, one of the things that the school committee has talked about through the budget process was putting on retainer with Drummond some money. And so I have executed a $25,000 retainer with Drummond for next year, so that will put you in a pretty good position. Thus far, we've only spent about $1,500 on your legal line this year.
Yay.
Pretty well. So that's two years in a row where you've spent a lot less than you budgeted and I think you can safely put that there. Article seven, I want to get on your radar that I think this article may be overspent. We've had some personnel and insurance changes there. That article is tight to begin with. And I'll know more tomorrow after I start going through what exactly those health and salary projections are going to be. In Article eight, which is transportation, we have continued to pay Northeast Transportation. That was pretty much required by districts, by the Secretary of Education de Vosse, and we have continued to do that. The exceptions would be special education runs and obviously athletics, which, which didn't, didn't go. Right now, we have a balance on our fuel line at just over 24,000. I'm hopeful that there is an opportunity to use that either to pre-buy on-road diesel for next year or in some way play that forward. I have collected three quotes from three providers at this point. The prevailing sentiment, though, among other business managers is to hold right now and not to commit to a purchase, or at least a purchase of a number of gallons. So I will have an update for you on that later in the month. We are evaluating the bus bid. I think I reported to you, I got one bid from Northeast Charter to the bus bid that we sent out. I will make a recommendation to you at your June 3 meeting. Have contacted the vendor for clarification on a couple of items that was in the bid. And just so that you recall, there are two options. One is to continue where the vendor would lease bids, lease bids, lease buses from the Winthrop School District. And the other is for the vendor to own their buses and essentially would run the entire bus operation with the exception of diesel fuel. Under both options, the district would purchase diesel. Let's see, Article nine, one of the things that I think you're going to anticipate needing for 2021 will be additional hand sanitizing stations. And I have talked with our buildings and the DOE and we're starting to think about, A, where you find such things, where they go, how much money it takes to purchase them, what the price is. We're going to have some cost runs in this article. There are going to be some personnel cost runs and there are going to be some fuel cost runs. I think I told you previously that the fuel tanks, particularly at the grade school, I knew would be in the red and the high school just went in the red as well. So, and then Article 10, before the end of the year is done, we're going to need to transfer $8,189. That's the debt article. We can't have that one be in the negative. The two bonds that are in there, they're probably what's throwing that article in the red right now are energy. And I didn't write the other one down, so I'm sorry about that. So why don't I pause and take questions on the finance report at this point?
Can I just ask a question about the, the oil?
Yep.
The, so if we have sort of like a balance of them of whatever, 25,000, 10,000, whatever it is, whether or not we pre-buy or not pre-buy, I mean, that sort of just sits in our account there anyways, correct?
No, the balance is not in your fuel oil. The balance is on your diesel on-road.
Yeah, so I meant, because, well, I know when we just did a warrant, we asked you that question about, because we just paid a couple of pretty big oil bills.
Right.
Things and didn't know if that was going to carry on to next year, whether giving us a cushion of pre-buying oil or not.
That's right. So what, we have a contract right now with Winthrop Fuel and we guarantee a certain number of gallons and they guarantee a certain price. And that contract has been executed for 2021. And what we have done is we have filled with, and I've got to check on one, with one exception, that would be the high school fuel tanks. And that's why you saw those really large bills go through. The on-road diesel is in Article eight and that's for buses. And that's because we stopped running the buses, even though we're paying the vendor in March. And that's why we have a $24,000 balance on that account. We don't pre-buy diesel fuel. And in my conversations with several vendors, they discourage districts from doing that.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on the finance report?
Nope.
Okay, so I, I'm going to roll on to a survey. In April, we put together, we thought it was pretty important to ask our families how things were going. And we put out a survey. We had a very positive response, over 200 people responded. And Matt was really helpful putting together the charts and things. And Matt, I'm going to ask you to speak to the results that we got, please.
Do you mind if I put the survey on the screen so people can see it? Okay, here it comes. Okay, so I'm going to show this from an overall view and the principals are going to give you the, some of the highlights that pertain to their particular schools. So we had, as Dr. Brown just said, we had over 200 responses. It was a pretty good rate of special ed versus the rest of them. That is just a little bit more than our regular special ed population. So I think this is a good representation. We asked things like, are you using any of the following for education? And obviously, an online distance learning program from the schools is the most popular because that's what we've been doing. Just to clarify, this went out just before April break and we hadn't started any of the new learning opportunities that started up just after break, the week before last, or last week time, I'm, I'm not sure anymore. So what other people are doing, they're using some whole school materials that they selected, some informal online learning programs that they have found their own. Those are the most popular ones. 6% have paid for a private learning program. And none of these was only a small, small handful. So they're using the things that we are offering as a district, which is good. The next question is a pretty common one. How concerned are you that the coronavirus situation will have a negative impact on your child's education? And the blue and the red are very concerned or moderately concerned. It's about two-thirds of the people are very concerned or moderately concerned that it has a negative effect. I've gathered some information from some of the other districts, district leaders who are asking this type of question to their communities and, and it's about the same, that about two-thirds of the people are, are pretty concerned about, about what's going to happen. 10% of them aren't concerned at all. So that's good news, but I'm, I'm not sure. Are we providing adequate learning opportunities for your child? About a third said yes and almost half said somewhat. So there's mixed results so far, but it looks like four out of five people are either in the yes or somewhat providing good, adequate learning opportunities. I also take that as good news. The next question is what's been most successful? Online activities is the most, almost 60% there. Other highlights are some video lessons and practice of skills. There's a bunch of others. Unfortunately, we didn't put a place for what the others might possibly be. But online activities, video lessons and practicing have been the most successful. And we also wanted to ask what has been the most challenging. And it's hard to read some of them, but the top three there, the biggest one is getting my child to engage in schoolwork. That is really no surprise during these opportunities. They've been out at that point, it was almost six weeks. Managing multiple students in the home, again, no surprise there. And writing activities are the three hardest things for parents to deal with their kids. Again, there was other there and we had places for comments that, that I'm not going to go through here. But so, one of the things that was not as challenging that I thought was behavior, not too many of those. Tech access is pretty low. They're being challenged with becoming teachers of their own kids at school, which is, again, no surprise if you read any of the news. It's very, very difficult. So those are the, the six questions that we asked. Again, the principals might talk about some of the, the highlights for their own buildings, but I'd be happy to take any particular questions that anybody may have. And I'm going to stop sharing in the meantime.
One of my questions is the same question that I had maybe last meeting or the first meetings for the principals, I suspect. What is the percentage of participation do you have from our, from your students at this point? Last time you reported, it was well in the 90s. I was wondering if it still is there.
I'll let the principals talk. Yep, Karen, go. See your hand up. Go ahead.
I think, Jeannie, I'd like to speak to the 90%. I don't think it was 90% participation in the last meeting. It was over 90% that we had spoken to or been in contact with. That's a difference for kids who are actually engaged in the work. I've had content area meetings last week, this week, and a staff meeting. And since we have put the expected learning versus just having opportunities out there for children to engage in, we have seen a great increase in participation. My math teacher, one of them is actually keeping track. On two separate Mondays, she had in excess of 150 emails from students that she had to answer within 24 hours and she had over 60% participation on a daily basis with more than 75% completion by the end of the week. That's just one class, but she's a math person, so she likes numbers.
Thank you. How about the other buildings? Thank you, Ms. Chris.
I'd, I'd say for the grade school, again, the, the contact with kids is certainly 90% or I would say it's actually probably closer to 100% in many cases. We, we've made contact with kids, we're keeping in touch with them. It may not be as regular as we would like, but we're, we definitely know, you know, what's up with our kids. In terms of the participation in lessons and instructional materials, it's somewhat variable. They're more interested in participating in a morning meeting through Zoom more so than doing a math assignment. But there's, there's, you know, I would, I'd guess that we're probably at least 760 to 75% of the kids are fairly engaged in what's going on. We've got a small percentage of kids probably that are eating it up and they'll, they'll take all that you can give to them. But as we've increased our expectations in Phase Three since April vacation, we have seen an increase in participation and performance. seen an increase in participation and performance as well. When we put it out there, the kids are more likely to step up and do it. Um, and so we've definitely seen some improvements since we've started Phase Three.
Thank you. How about my high school?
So I'm gonna try this, my internet connection isn't very solid tonight, but at the high school, I'm gonna say, um, we're close to 90%, a little over 90%, I would say, um, for participation. What I've noticed, a couple of things I've noticed, um, that kids are picking and choosing. Um, a lot of kids are picking and choosing the classes they're engaging in. I would say it's high in the core areas, but, um, some are choosing not to engage as frequently in the electives. The other thing that's, um, was kind of concerning this week, they started going through seniors just to keep an eye on them. And, um, noticed that kids who had been engaged, um, you know, they took April vacation off, but some of them have struggled to come back from April vacation. And the teachers are noticing that too, so, um, we talked about the need to stop and reach out to our kids again to check on their wellbeing, uh, see if we can figure out some things to support them better. And try to get them back into their education, um, once we figured out some things.
That, that sort of is a segue into my next question for anybody, is, um, the survey indicated that there's a great number of parents that are having difficulty getting their kids to the schoolwork. Matt, that's what you sort of indicated with that. Are, are there any tricks of the trade, anything that we can do to, um, help those parents get their kids to this new virtual learning education?
So I think at the high school level, um, the fact that we've tried to involve parents, um, particularly those students who had not been engaged, um, including them in the emails that we're sending out with the assignments, um, so that the parents also know exactly what is going to be due and when it's going to be due. Um, we've seen that that has helped. Um, you know, just, just the communication piece, and I think that was another thing that came out in that survey, they wanted a little bit more communication. So, um, that is one of the things we're trying to increase is communication.
Thank you. Ms. Chris, I saw your hand up.
Um, and I have to agree with Mr. Campbell, that's exactly what I took away from the survey, was parents wanted to be more in the loop. My staff was communicating directly with students and doing a great job, but students were not communicating with their parents as clearly as they could. And so when we have kids who are not engaging or not engaging to the depth that we want them to, the teachers are reaching out to the parents, uh, and in order to address the communication issue, I've started last Monday, and this Monday, I've sent out, um, as an email blast to all parents who have emails, uh, in the Power School system. Uh, just, just the facts, just saying, this is what's happening, this is what I know to be true. Just keep in contact, keep in contact, please reach out to us, and we, we've seen a great, uh, boost since those communications with parents.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think, um, at the, at the grade school, I think one of the big things is increasing FaceTime with teachers and kids. And we've been working on that, uh, Jolene's been, um, working on that in PLC time this week, as we've met with the teams, and really reinforcing the importance of their voices and their faces, um, as much as possible. The, the kids really do want to engage with their teachers. Um, so I think as we increase that time, that's gonna make it more likely that they're gonna engage in some of those activities.
Thank you very much. Dr. Brown?
Okay, well, thank you very much, I think that was a good discussion. There's another, oh, Joe?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to ask a couple of quick questions, but, uh, actually, let's just start with an observation, I think that poll was great, I'm glad you took it. I would, would like to seek and again, uh, because I do worry about the 600, uh, parents or families that didn't participate in that poll as well. You, you know, you have to do things more than once sometimes to, to get the desired results. The thing is that, uh, I do hope we can talk about the training that's going on to make our teachers as effective as they could be with remote learning, because I agree with the superintendent. This is standard, this is gonna be taken now to who, whenever. Um, and so, uh, I, I think that we've got to put as much training, uh, assistance, development, whatever you want to call it. And I think we've got to work with the other school systems too, uh, to get the trained staff that we can to, to assist our students. So those are the two options that I would make, and, um, I would also encourage parents to talk directly to the principal and the superintendent, you know, if they have any personal concerns too. But this is, this to me is the highest priority that, that I feel is going to affect our district year, two, three years. We're into this.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Okay, Dr. Brown, I think you're all done, my turn?
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm not anywhere near done. I've got hours to go before we sleep. You know, I, I want to thank Mr. Petrowski for such a great segue, because that's exactly the next piece I want to talk about as part of my report. Um, I sent out a memo regarding moving some of our professional development time to June. And I want to thank both, um, Kristin and Joe for getting back to me with some very thoughtful questions, because it really helped me think about some of the work that we need to do. And one of the things that, or one of the groups that we have not yet asked what we need to do is our teachers. And so next Monday, we're going to send out a survey from the buildings to our teachers, our educators, and ask them, what do you need? You know, what do you need regards to training to help you with distant learning? What kind of time do you need? We know that we have a number of transitions where, when kids go from fifth to sixth grade, from eighth to ninth grade. We know that we have transitions when kids go academically from, say, Algebra One to Algebra Two. How can we help you address what we anticipate may be some learning gaps? You know, what, what do you need as a staff member? We also need to ask teachers, what do you need in regards to summer work for your honors and AP classes? There are a number of classes where kids work over the summer. Um, so I want to hear their voices, and I want them to tell us what sort of support they're going to need. One of the things that I think they're going to need is access to technology and in better assurances that the kids have the technological resources that they need. Um, and so things, one of the, the discussion pieces is, do we let kids keep laptops over the summer? You know, historically, we always gather them up, and is now the right time to do that? Or do we say, no, they're a tool, it's just like a, a book at this point, that you need to have? So that's something that we're thinking about, and then things for the staff. Uh, we want to ask them, when, when do we give you this professional development? Um, things that I've heard, and, and just so that you know, we have weekly meetings, and usually the Teachers Association is part of those calls. And as I was thinking about this today, and Kristin, this is why your, um, questions were really helpful in advance. Because it allowed me to remember that we spent hours talking about this, and the school committee hasn't had the benefit of that dialogue. And so that, it was really a pause and think there for a minute, because, you know, we really thrash through this stuff, and then we make recommendations, and I don't feel like I gave you really good evidence as to why we're making the recommendations that we were. So, one of the things that I'm hearing from teachers, even without a survey, is that they are wiped out that Zooming and trying to constantly recreate how they teach kids is exhausting, and that they, they need 2019 to end. And putting five days of professional development time at the end of the 1920 year is, is just not what they want. Um, they want time, this is what they're communicating to me, they want time to tie up their rooms, they want time to do the end-of-year things, but in terms of robust professional development and being in a good headspace to do that, they're, they're just not there. Um, the other thing that I have been reminded of from some of my colleagues, both as superintendents and my colleagues here in Winthrop, is that I don't have the best information right now around which to make professional development decisions. I don't know what school is going to look like, I put out a memo, I shared that with you. There are probably a dozen different ways to configure that. Joe, in your email, you pointed out that there may be a different schedule for different students, and it probably is just not going to look like the way it traditionally does. But how I use time in June to plan for that, um, it just, the timing is just isn't right. You know, Mark and I were talking today about how and what to do with graduation, and we were reminded again that the 50-person limit goes all the way through August. You know, we have a staff of almost 200 people, so, you know, how and what you do is going to look different. And talking with the WEA, they've been very accommodating and saying, yes, we'll move some of our days from 2019 to 2020. And I, I really appreciate that, not a lot of associations have been willing to do that. Um, even some local associations right in our neighborhood have said, no, you know, if you want more days next year, you're gonna have to pay us to do that. Our association has not said that, they've been very gracious. Um, and they've been part of our team. So, again, I need to ask teachers and educators who've been doing the work what they need, and listen, in my opinion, listen to them to say, all right, Connie, this is what we need to get ready for 2021. With that information, I need to find out how to adjust to potential differences. I know that all of the professionals I've ever had the pleasure of working with don't turn out, tune out, June, whatever the last day is, and don't check back in on the fir-, until the first day. They're professionals, they work throughout the summer, they check in with their building administrators, and I would expect that they would do the same thing again. I think that we've got to do some assessment, and I've highlighted a little bit about where we need to gather some data. And again, it's really asking people who are doing the work. I do know that there are several things we're going to have to do when we come back, and that includes, we're going to have to figure out how to assess kids. They're going to be, regardless of our best efforts, there's going to be a lot of unevenness when they come back in September. Um, we're talking about using some of the traditional assessments like the NUIA. We're talking about teacher-designed assessments to find out where kids are. We're talking about using the standards that we have in our classes already, we know what some of those power standards are at the high school. And so we need to use that information to figure out how we're going to meet the kids' needs when they come back. And that is probably a longer and lengthier explanation, Kristin, to the questions that you posed, um, that I really appreciate having, having the benefit of thinking about them, but that's, that's kind of where I ended up. And so I think at this point, I'd be happy to take questions and, um, or open it up to my team. And Teresa, you and I think I saw Marcia having part of that, so, you know, feel free to, to opine on any of these things.
Jana, will you please let Ms. Chris, uh, go ahead and speak, and then I'll call on you, thank you, Ms. Chris?
I, I just wanted to add, add to Connie's too, a lot of the feedback that I'm getting from my staff is they need tech support. Um, and we don't have tech support to get them. We need to wait until, hopefully, we hire someone who can give us the technology knowledge. I, I mean, a lot of the questions that they're asking, when we do find out the answer, it's a, it's a 10-second answer, but it takes us three days to figure it out. Um, so I think that's also a piece that we're anxiously awaiting, technology support.
Thank you. Ms. Dykett?
Uh, my only question, I know that Connie kind of, it actually came up when she was talking about this. Um, if we do move those days from one calendar year to the next calendar year, what does that mean for pay? And I understand that some of the teachers are fine with, okay, I kind of get these days off this year, and I know I'm gonna have to do them in August, and that's gonna be okay, but what about for new staff, um, that weren't sort of in on that agreement? Like, are we need, do we need to pay them, is it gonna, how is that all gonna work? I mean, obviously, we need to pay them, I don't mean that like that, but has that been thought about? I want to make sure they get paid, that's the point.
You ask a great question, um, and it's layered insofar as new staff would come in at their rate of pay. Um, and we would like, we talked about the new teacher orientation, having a separate day for that, and the consensus was that, A, we're not really satisfied with the new teacher orientation program that we have. We don't think it's particularly robust. Um, it's a little bit long-winded when someone like yours truly is talking about policies and personnel practices, and their eyes just glaze over after a while, I've done this now for two years, and, um, that, it's too much. And so we think that a better approach would be to bring them in on, I think it's that Tuesday, I don't have a calendar in front of me, uh, and have them spend a portion of each of those three days working as a cohort and working with the people that it makes sense to. And one day, it may be having Ida come in and talk about, you know, your personnel practices. Uh, another day, it might be doing some of our mandatory trainings. And, and again, we want to take a look at that program for them, so we would pay them. Um, for people who are returning, it would be the days at their 2019, 20 rate. You know, we're essentially porting over three from 1920 to 2021. And I, I think, I feel like, Jen, I missed part of your question, did I leave something out?
I just want to make sure that it's budgeted for, or we like it. I get that some, like, if they're not gonna work those days under this calendar year, that's a different calendar year. So are they not expecting to get paid the extra two days or three days in 2021 because they were paid for it in 1920? Or are we not paying for them in 1920, and they will be paid extra days in 2021, does that make sense?
So they're, we're basically moving three days from 1920 to 2021, we're not adding to 2021. We're essentially porting them, for lack of a better word, from one year to the next. Teresa, is that your understanding as well? I'm gonna put you on the spot. Teresa, can you hit your mute button?
Sorry about that. Um, the three days that we're gonna do in August are just everybody's pay averaged. We've already looked into it, everybody except for the custodians and, um, school nutrition is pay averaged. And this, um, I'm not quite sure what to call it, but there, this school year, the pay averaging for this school year goes till the end of August. So September starts the new pay rate anyways, so it's all, we're all good on, on our end and with Ida, it should be just fine.
Thanks, Teresa.
You're welcome.
Ms. Johnway?
Um, yes, thank you, Dr. Brown.
Um, yes, thank you, Dr. Brown, for that, um, for that thorough explanation. Um, the, the memo was a little brief for me and my lack of, um, being part of all of the conversations and I knew that you had been having all of those discussions, but not having the, um, you know, the, the details of it. Um, I just needed to make sure that they're being experienced in this house, in a vacuum, that, you know, that those discussions were, were being had. Because I know that, um, that all of that, our, our teachers and even you all as administrators, all of the adjustments that you've had to, to make, um, make every single day, just, you know, you're just trying to get through every single day. So, I was under the impression and feeling good about the fact that school is going to end early. We are gonna kind of wrap up the student days. And then the teachers are gonna have this time to reflect and decompress and, and figure out what went well and what didn't go well because I can't imagine that that is able to go on right now. So I was a little nervous that we were going to lose some of that by pushing it to the fall. But, um, it completely makes sense that if you guys are going to, as administrators and teachers, look at a learning model and you don't know what that learning model is going to be like depending on the conditions that, you know, Maine is in and, and the United States is in, in terms of combating the virus, then it would be wasted time to do it in June. And also Karen, I appreciate you bringing in the information about needing tech support and just needing some guidance technology-wise, because if that's where the, the teachers are feeling the need, you're right, we don't right now have that, um, that support. And so that would be better. I was just nervous that we were going to need to launch and create a program that was going to need to be implemented in three days and not have the time nor resources in order to do that. Um, so this has calmed my mind immensely. So, thank you.
Yay. Anyone else? Thank you. Dr. Brown?
Thank you very much. Um, I think that's it.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Brown. That was super. Uh, my turn. School Committee Chair Report, and you'll all be very glad to know that I have nothing to add to that report. Um, I do want to express on the part of the school committee, our, um, our deep thanks and please, uh, administrators, would you pass this on to your folks? For all of the labor, all of the sweat, all of the stress and anxiety that they're putting themselves through, to still deliver to our students' education. Appreciate that, everybody. If I could shake your hand or do an elbow bump with you all, I would do that, but not able. Standing Committee Reports. Finance. Ms. Dykett, do you want to take that on?
Yep. Uh, we did AP warrants, uh, we being, um, Sue Bells and I, uh, AP warrant 21 in food service, uh, 14. And do we know if there are any new warrants? And we have not done payroll, so I'm sure that's probably sitting, waiting to be done. So we're pretty open to when we can come in. So maybe Connie, I'll shoot you another email and see what's ready to be done and when we can come in and do that.
Yep.
Awesome.
Great, thank you. Policy Committee has not met negotiations? Ms. John Way, do you want to take that?
Yeah, nothing new at this time.
Thank you. Administrator Open Forum, Mr. Lad?
Do I get to go first?
Yes, next time we'll switch it up, okay?
Alright, alright, I'll go. So, uh, what do I start? Well, I'll start with the, the Chromebooks, that we talked about that a little bit earlier. So I do have Chromebooks at the grade school. Um, I'm ready to send them out, uh, to families. However, I'm still waiting for technical information from Department of Education in terms of how to administer those machines so that we can, uh, interact with them remotely and, uh, you know, return them to factory settings or do any of those types of things that we need to be able to do before we give them out. Uh, once they go out the door, they're out of our hands. So, um, hoping, the DOE was supposed to call me today, this afternoon. Um, I did talk with somebody this morning because they didn't get back to me yet, so I will try again in the morning. Uh, but I'm certainly hopeful that those are gonna go out the door uh, next week. The other, uh, piece, which was a complete surprise, and I, I, I know Dr. Brown doesn't like surprises, but I, for some reason I was busy today and so I didn't tell her, but it's a good surprise, so she'll forgive me. Um, so then yesterday afternoon, at the end of the day, as I was getting ready to leave, the UPS truck pulled up and they, they brought in another group of devices. They're Samsung Galaxy tablets, um, that I had no idea those were coming. Um, so we ended up with, um, I think 60 of those. And they also included 12 hotspots that can go, um, out to families that do not have internet access. However, we're back in the same situation in terms of being able to register those devices. Those devices have a specific management system that they're still trying to set up, um, at DOE. And again, they're staying hopefully within a few days, but, um, I'm hoping that those devices might go out, um, next week as well. Probably the, um, the tablets, which are touchscreen and pretty basic. I'm looking at sending those to the preschool kids. And the Chromebooks will hopefully be able to go out to the, um, K1, 2 families. And, uh, so that will greatly increase the connectivity. I know we do have some kids that are working off their parents' phones and stuff, so, um, that will be helpful once we can get those out the door. Uh, I wanted to just quickly report, we, we figured out, because Matt needed information for, he's working on the NCLB Performance Report. Thank you, Matt. Um, I, I'm, I'm worried it's gonna come back to me when he leaves.
I was just gonna say something.
Yeah, well, I can see the writing on the wall, but, um, he's, he's working on that right now. So, we had to pull together our, our attendance information and we've worked real hard at that this inf-, this year. Uh, we have the, actually the last couple of years to increase our average daily attendance, which we did, um, up through the March 13th date. And we also reduced our chronic absentee, um, rate. Uh, we're down to 10.4 on our chronic absenteeism rate. Um, and I was really hoping to get down to 10% was my goal, so we were moving in that direction. So that was real good news I just wanted to report on. Um, we did start on the Phase 3 learning menus, uh, after April vacation, which is the more directed instruction. Um, and we've been working with our teachers. Jolene's doing an unbelievable job. I'd do a thumbs up, but I can't do a thumbs up other than this kind right now. Uh, but she's been working very hard with the teachers, um, during PLCs on that piece of it. In terms of the, the survey, real quickly, um, we had 183 responses from the grade school. So it was almost half of our families responded. Um, several families have multiple students, so it doesn't show up in the data quite the same way. But when you go through and include all of the, the families that were represented, it was 183 of them. Um, and about 20% of them said that we were not doing an adequate job. However, 47% said we were somewhat adequate and 33% was adequate. Um, so we, we are definitely on the positive side of things and this was prior to, uh, going into the Phase 3. And we went through the comments and concerns from the survey, uh, from parents. And much of what they were, the concern area of it were those people that were looking for more of that direct contact and more of the face-to-face, um, and some additional directed work, which we were already, uh, up and running. We had done preparation before the survey to have, to roll that out, um, on that next Monday. So we were already doing what they were going to ask us to do. Um, and I did want to report that there were 22 parents that asked me to contact them through the survey. And all of those contacts have been, um, made. And the vast majority of them that did reply to the response um, indicated that the, whatever their issue was, it had already been resolved and thanked us for the hard work. So, that's it.
Great. Ms. Chris?
There, unmuted. Um, I, I'd like to give a huge shout out to my staff, all of the teachers and ed techs who are just doing a, a, a fantastic job reaching out to students, help, trying to get them engaged, giving them opportunities that they've never had before because this is a whole new world for us. And so I have to give a shout out to them. I also have to give a shout out to Liz Warner and Troy Tucker. Uh, Liz is coming in and doing her regular stuff at the desk. Uh, and because of, uh, wh- where we are in the year, we can't set up classes for next year. There's a bunch of things that we can't do because of parameters with scheduling and, and all of that in Power School. But she's doing things like she, she's gonna start tomorrow morning emptying out lockers and bagging up student materials, putting tags on them and putting them by connection groups. So she's just stepped it up and she has uh, taken it upon herself to do whatever needs to be done in the building. And Troy Tucker is doing an outstanding job at the middle school outside. He's there every morning at 6:30 a.m. Using the chainsaw, the tractor, picking up, uh, dead trees, tree limbs. If, if you had the opportunity to drive up through, uh, when we first started this whole stuff with all of the windstorms that we had, there were trees down everywhere and branches and he's just done a, a great job. So I, I need to give a shout out to them. Um, great job. Um, as far as the survey for me, I had 83 parents respond, which was, uh, 36%. And what they wanted most from us was more communication for parents, which we are tr-, uh, trying to take care of. And one platform, what I, what I saw in the comments was, you know, some people are using Zoom, some are using Google Hangout, some are using Google Classroom. And is there any way that we can have a standardized platform? And so that's one of the things that we've discussed as a staff, that we are going to need training in and make a determination. So it will be easier for the kids and the parents to follow what they're doing. I had 12 parents in the survey asked to be contacted. Uh, I have contacted them all. I had four respond. And the same as what Mr. Lad said, all four said that their issues have already been solved. They're very glad that we are now doing new learning and they're glad that the work is being counted. Even though it is not being graded, it is being counted as completed. Uh, that's it from the middle school.
Thank you very much. Mr. Campbell?
So, the mathematician did not run the statistics like my two colleagues did. I looked at the-
Hard to believe.
I looked at the anecdotal data, the, um, you know, there was a lot of comments, um, from parents for their appreciation on the hard work that the teachers were putting in to get the lessons out to their students. Appreciation for teachers checking in on the wellbeing of their children, that was appreciated. Then the concerns, um, really started showing up and the concerns dealt with workload. Not so much the amount, but maybe the fact that it all seemed to be dumped onto their students on Monday morning. And it seemed overwhelming, especially for the younger kids. Um, it took them a while to get adjusted and, and creating their own schedule. There were some concerns with April vacation, that we wouldn't be giving work during April vacation. I believe that was made clear. Um, that we, uh, weren't to do any, um, lessons with students during the week of April vacation. Um, concerns for communication, which I think we spoke about earlier. Um, one of the things that, um, I was hearing were, even though I was sending emails to the students, students weren't sharing it. I was putting that information up on the website and for whatever reason, um, parents still weren't seeing it. So the high school did a mailing as soon as we got back from April vacation, sharing all of the information that we'd shared previously. We just put it down on paper for everybody. Um, like, was it the middle school, concerns with the number of different venues teachers were using to engage, um, students. And I asked my teachers, um, to throw at me all of the different ways that, um, they had been communicating with students. Um, Google Classroom, email, Google Chat, Zoom, videos and articles, um, pre-recorded lessons, Khan Academy, Flipgrid, Google Blogger, AP Classroom, and YouTube were all being used. So I, I do understand what that might be causing for confusion and stress. So like at the middle school, I think we've got to, um, have those conversations when we get back together and come up with, um, you know, the most effective ways. And narrow that down so that we aren't going to many different, um, you know, it's having to check so many different locations too. So, um, we do need to work on that. I made contact either personally calling or emailing parents that requested it. And again, like my co-, two colleagues in the other building, um, the word was, uh, we appreciate you reaching out. Our concerns were addressed by teachers or are still being addressed by teachers. So they were very appreciative of the work that is being done. The high school staff and administration would like to congratulate Camden Tweedy and Madison Ford. They were recognized at our virtual town meeting, um, for being Students Month for February and March. A huge congratulations from the, um, staff and administration to Jacob Smith. Jacob Smith, um, is a Merit Scholarship finalist. These are based on his 2019 PSAT scores. He scored in the upper echelon of all juniors nationwide. So hopefully we'll, uh, see some money coming out of there.
Super.
Um, we have finalized some plans in regards to, um, senior activities for the class of 2020. The final town meeting where we will not only recognize some Students Months and do a WBUS, uh, presentation, but we will be recognizing seniors, um, as they have been in the past, uh, for their academic accomplishments over the past four years. That will take place May 28th at 11 o'clock in the morning. Again, we will do that the way we did back in April. We will, um, run it live through Facebook. We are looking to hold Class Night and Graduation on the days that they're scheduled. Um, Class Night, um, is scheduled currently to be June 12th. Our plan at this time is to, um, record the presentation of scholarships. That way we can, um, invite in the people from the community who also present. And we're, we're asking them to submit video recordings of their presentation so that we conclude it with ours. Um, Graduation, there's still some discussions being held. I put three options out to seniors. One is, um, let's see if I can remember this. The first one is, I'm just a, you know, drive up to the school and walk in, um, one gym door with family members and grab their diploma and, and walk out the other gym so that we can maintain social distancing. Um, another plan, um, just a parade through the town, um, where they drive up through Ramblin' Road and, and then grab their diplomas. Uh, the last one, we're still working on, um, we're gonna work with Headlight out of Portland. Um, we're trying to see if we can put up a large screen outside of the high school and broadcast live um from the the PAC or the gym and allow families to um be parked out in around the building so they can watch the whole ceremony from beginning to end. That's something we gotta work on with Headlight, um, because I'm sure there's some good costs associated with that. I'm also working with teachers and parents to plan other ways we can celebrate the senior successes. We've had a meeting last week where they threw out some ideas, and then I threw it back at them and said, okay, let's go see what it's gonna cost us to do these things and who's gonna help us. Um, we're meeting again Thursday night to finalize some of those activities. And I will tell you that some of the businesses in the community have been reaching out to me, asking how they can help. So um, and they're willing to do some activities for the kids as well. And I believe that completes my report unless you have questions.
Thank you very, very much. I know we all appreciate all that you're trying to do for our graduating seniors and the fact that they're missing out on a major celebration, a few of them. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Stoneton?
Yes, uh, I don't have a ton to report for you, Ms. Guy. There's not a lot going on in my world right now.
I didn't want to ignore you, though.
No, that's fine. Uh, I've been working with Mr. Campbell quite a bit on trying to figure out how things are gonna work at the end of the year. Um, you and I have been pretty good sounding board for one another. Started fall signups this week just to try to get things going to see where we're gonna look. Next fall, I'm not hopeful, just gonna be honest with you, uh, looking at some of the things going on. As far as how many people can attend certain events, uh, I'm quite concerned that I don't even know how you would pull some of those events off if you just allowed officials and um, uh, you know, team members to to show up. I do have, I'm part of the MPA Advisory Committee, and I'll be there in a couple of weeks. Um, to have that meeting with them, I hope to bring something back to you guys a little bit more from that. So enough on the gloom and doom. Uh, we are moving forward with our senior awards to make sure that we, on class night, uh, you know, represent that part of their career and uh make sure that we celebrate them in in that way. Um, we'll also be part of obviously taping some of those things. Um, and I guess, I guess the last thing I just wanted to share with you is that, you know, we've been part of a scheduling statewide thing, Winter Paspen, uh, as we transition into the new, new, uh, whatever season, I guess, for the lack of a better term, of how it would look. Um, and we've got some things going on as far as how we may or may not be able to do things in the future. And I I don't mean to be so vague, but there's just a large uh community of athletic directors that are trying to address what may or may not happen as far as regulations. Uh, and we're trying to make sure that we put our kids in a position where um they'll be able to hopefully still compete.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Lemuel?
Um, just wanna um echo what my colleagues are saying. Um, my staff is just rock stars right now. They're just going the extra mile for students and families, dropping off things. Jackie is copying a lot of things for students who we need to have more hands-on with than just the computer. So uh, they're working really hard, and I appreciate everything they're doing. Um, at the end of the month, we have CDS meetings. Uh, I think I have thirteen scheduled over two days, um, and those are all gonna be via Zoom. So that should be very interesting to do those. I think that's it.
What's happening with our off-campus special ed students?
Uh, they're all doing um remote learning also. Uh, we had a few who needed laptops, so we provided those, um, and some of the families had them. I actually talked to one of the special purpose private schools today, and she said it was going really well, and they had much better engagement and participation than they expected. Some of our more significantly needy students, I know those schools want to get them back into the schools, and I think they're already coming up with plans to to start bringing them back in next month with hopefully fully in July. So it's very interesting to see where everybody is at.
Uh, so um, as far as our on-campus students, no summer program?
At this point, the state is recommending no um face-to-face summer program. We'd have to continue with some of the remote um learning that we're doing. Um, the therapists, the speech therapists and the occupational therapists and the physical therapists, they were out in front of everybody. I had a meeting with them the other day. Our kids have barely missed a beat with their services since the started. I mean, they've really been providing a lot of teletherapy. I mean, my, some of my therapists are making videos and giving them to the parents to model what they should be doing. It's really amazing. So, um, and they've all agreed to continue doing that in the summer for extended school year services. Love to get the kids in, but that's not what the recommendation is right now.
Thank you. Mr. Shay?
So the update that I have is about the CARES Act funding. Uh, we are still waiting for the application. I'm sorry, for the CARES Act funding, so some of the funding from the federal government. Uh, we're waiting for the application to open at this point. Uh, we've been told it's imminent for about a week and a half now. So uh, I think they're just working out some some bugs. I heard today that it might be by Friday. Uh, as soon as we, as soon as it opens, we'll apply for the money, and they said we should get it within probably two or three business days. Uh, what we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to hold off on spending it immediately until we uh figure out what its best uses are for. Uh, Dr. Brown talked earlier about the survey we're gonna give to some of the teachers and what they may need. So we'll, we'll try to use some of that uh to use it appropriately. I think the money that we're gonna get is approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh that we can use to to help. Uh, I think our goal is to use it for our new reality of uh remote learning on occasion. Uh, but we're gonna really take our time before we just spend it. Uh, we have about two years to spend it, uh, and it's not a whole lot of money in the long run. Uh, but we should be seeing that within the next week or so, and as soon as that comes in, I'm sure Dr. Brown will uh let everybody know.
That's good news, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Mr. Petrowski, you have to.
I got it. I got it. Uh, Matt, is this the pandemic my federal government is putting out to the schools?
Yes, it is.
Okay, cuz I, I did see in Lewiston, they use that money or what they assumed was gonna be the money to be put into their budget, and that's a key reason why they're actually going to be uh having a lower or a lower request from the city of Lewiston than they had previously. I'm not saying we that, I just saw that they had already made that, the decision what they were gonna do with their money.
Yep.
They've included it as a revenue, Joe, for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one?
That's right. They, they've included that that's going before their town uh for ratification.
Thank you. Mr. Farr? Are you behind that picture, Mr. Farr?
I am behind that picture.
There you are.
So, um, adult ed, we are continuing with our students in whatever format works. Um, some online work, mostly we have dropped off books and other things for some students. We have some students who cannot use a screen, so they're doing phone calls with instructors. Um, it's not the best format for all of our learners, um, but we're making it work. Um, some good news is, um, we are uh hopefully gonna have some on, some online enrichment opportunities coming up in the next month. Probably some cooking classes that we can do online. So we're kind of figuring that out, learning how to get that done. Not something we've typically done. Um, and uh, this last, this week, we know, I know now, um, that the Kennebec County Adult Education Hub, we are purchasing a um access to a learning management system. So if anybody knows Blackboard or Moodle or other things that they've used at the university system, um, adult education in Kennebec County, all of us will have access to do our classes in that same system that the university main system is now using and the community colleges are now using. So that came through and was a um good news this week, which means that as we move forward with classes, we need to be prepared for more online learning ourselves. We expect, anticipate a number of of students, um, new students, students who are unemployed, who need to finish their high school diploma or wanna go back to college, and that is kind of our role. So it is.
Right.
So, um, we anticipate that. We, since, since Friday, we've had three inquiries, um, three new inquiries into completing a high school diploma or or uh high school equivalency. And so we're doing intakes over the phone and continuing to serve students. So that's where we're at.
Thank you. Nice to see you, Mr. Farr.
Good, good to see you.
Yeah. Chef Aaron?
Hello. Um, my staff have been engaged in deep cleaning all of the kitchens and getting them sort of put to bed for the summer as normally would be done in June. They're working a a few hours a week to get that um done. I have a couple of employees who are unable to work and they're using sick time. So, um, other employees are helping with the schools that are short-staffed. I've been working on menus for next year and state requirements for next year and um getting anything done that I can when I can't actually cook and serve food, which is what I wanna go back to doing.
Yes. We'd like you to go back to doing that, too.
But that's about it for now.
Yeah. Thank you very much. And I assume when a CHA does their A and E presentation for the PAC that it's not going to include another spaghetti supper.
No, I'm sorry. Connie said I couldn't do that.
But thank you anyway. Thank you, folks. New business, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the district technology coordinator um job description.
So moved. Second.
In a second, thank you. And discussion? Any discussion, uh, Superintendent Brown?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. Um, I got a lot of help writing this from some of the administrators and especially Mr. Lad, who was key in organizing it and putting it together. Uh, so I think it it reads pretty well. We're starting to accept applications now.
Oh, how many do you have so far?
I don't know yet. Um, I just know that they're coming in.
Excellent. That's good news. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll.
Yes, if I could just comment, I, I, I really feel that this is an absolutely essential position. Um, and I'm guessing that the board will share that viewpoint. We absolutely cannot go into another year without somebody to organize um technology. Uh, we, we just don't have the skill set to keep this running.
Well, especially the year that we're looking at moving into. It would be crazy to think otherwise. Karen, I can't, Ms. Chris, I can't hear you.
I was gonna say, even before this, Jenny, it was, we were floundering with one-on-one, even, even before the remote. It, we have to have someone in charge.
Yeah. Well, as you know, that's not the way we wanted it to happen.
Yeah, no.
All the cards fell at the same time at the beginning of the school year, and people weren't available to fill those positions. So hopefully we're, we're a little bit ahead of it. Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? I'll call the roll then. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Me, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, oh, I flipped the page a little too soon. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the computer technician job description.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Anything, Dr. Brown?
No, same as before. I had a lot of help writing this.
Okay, thank you. All right. If I don't see anybody else, I will call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Bells? Oh, geez! I'm so sorry. Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Where are you, Sue?
I'm right here.
I'm sorry, Sue.
It's okay.
I did have your husband in school. What can I say? I called him Master Bells, though. Okay, and me, motion passes unanimously. Um, this is the portion for the public, this is the portion um of the meeting where you are invited to make comment um about any educational matter. So if you raise your hand or if you, if you. I don't see anything happening there. So we will move on. School committee, open forum. Ms. Bells?
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for, you know, reaching out and doing the survey and really listening to the feedback and then getting back to them so quickly. Uh, it's just remarkable, and I just really appreciate it.
Thank you. Goes a long way, those parent telephone calls. Um, Ms. Dykett?
Uh, yeah, just to reiterate, um, being a teacher, I know exactly what's what's going on on this side and and trying to engage kids and come up with a whole new way of teaching. So thank you to all the teachers and the ed techs and the administrators and Camp Michiawana and uh everyone else who is um just has jumped in with both feet. Um, it certainly is a whole new um learning. Um, one other thing I actually just, with this whole thing happening, and Connie kind of made a reference to maybe having no more snow days in the future. I'm also wondering, and and again, this may be something to think about too. Um, I'm wondering if we couldn't do remote learning days even when teachers, uh, when we have conference days or workshop days. Um, if we have a Friday off, well, we, if there's no school on a Friday due to the fact that we have a workshop day, could we do a remote learning packet and have kids still count that as a student day? Um, to therefore, again, shorten up that calendar, either on the not starting in August part or not going until almost July sometimes. Um, just something to think about for future. I'm not asking to necessarily change a calendar for next year again, but um seeing how remote learning days go and, or snow days go if we institute remote learning so that we don't have to count those anymore. I'm just wondering if we could do that with some of our conference days or comp days so that we could count those as student days. Just something to think about.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Petrowski?
I really don't have anything besides the thanks. Uh, I, there's so many people that are contributing, you know, throughout our community. I think at the beginning of the road, that the Rambler Road is working well. I've been going seeing it. I always say, now, what are they gonna say today? And, uh, you know, they've done a great job of going through the uh list and and saying thank you to the response. And, you know, they've done a great job of going through the list and saying thank you to the responders. And I think that's a full, around town, great deal of concern though about students and what are we going to do with them or what are they going to do with themselves? And I'm looking to say, you know, school, whatever you can do, please do whatever you can do because the kids are somewhat lost out there sometimes too. But I think we're doing a pretty good job. We've got things to do. We get a little bit better, but overall I'd say we're doing a pretty good job.
Thank you. Ms. Shumway?
Yeah, a couple of things. I was really sad on Monday to realize that it was Teacher Appreciation Day and that it wasn't going to be recognized in the traditional way. So of course, this year more than ever, our teachers and administrators and staff need to hear our appreciation. So I just want to take the time now to say thank you to all of you for reinventing the wheel almost on a daily basis and, and making all these changes and making them work for our individual students' needs. I'm in awe of it all and the time and energy that you've, everyone has put into it. And to the administrators, I really appreciate you increasing your communication with your parents. I know that it's atypical of you to have to constantly be updating them or justifying what you're doing on a daily basis. But I think that it adds a sense of security for parents in a time when, you know, everyone's feeling really insecure. So I know it's more work for all of you, but it's greatly appreciated. And I hope that you're seeing that in the end, it's going to reduce maybe some of those, those panic questions that you're getting. And then I just thought of this when Jana was talking about changes to the calendar. Adding the three PD days to August, does the school committee need to vote on another calendar change?
I, I don't think so.
Okay.
Because you're, I mean, it's, no, I don't think so.
Okay. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Josh with us? How about Kenna?
I don't think so.
Actually, Kenna's just walking in for Mark.
I think it might be unfair for her to.
I know she's going to love me for this. Hang on one second.
Hi, everyone.
Kenna, how was work today?
It was very busy.
Oh, good.
Oh, I bet. Got 30 bucks in tips though, so.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to say?
I think my biggest concern is graduation. Like, I don't know, I'm just like wondering how that's all going to work out.
Mr. Campbell has some ideas and he's, he's working very hard to make something wonderful happen for you folks in the context of a national health crisis.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I made my comment earlier. Thank you all so very much. With that, we'll move into, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. Matt, I need your telephone number, I guess, so that I can call you.
I was just thinking that. I was just thinking that. I will, my, my number, I'll put it in the chat and it's.
Okay, and I'm supposed to call you when we want to come out of executive session?
Yes. So I assume that everyone else can go. And whoever is left, I know Dr. Brown already told me that she is not attending the executive session. Is that still right?
Right. That's correct. That's why I have to have your phone number.
And there are people go right away now. Yeah, so is it just the five of you that are going in?
Yes.
Okay, I will do that and I will sit here lonely in the main room.
Oh, Matt, I really feel badly that you're going to sit around for an hour or two.
If this takes an hour or two, I'm going to call you before that.
We're working on our goals for Mr. Highskin there.
That's good. That's very good.
Yeah, yeah. Joe, did you have something you were trying to say?
I think there are six of us out there going into.
Just five of us.
It's funny.
Just the five of us. Yeah, Superintendent Brown is not coming.
Oh, that's, that's great. You know, can she go get my dogs from Laurie's lawn and bring them back? They're out there chasing the foxes.
Maybe you should ask Laurie to do that.
Yeah.
Would you like to take a motion, Chairwoman Geyer?
I would, please.
I, I move to enter into executive session regarding personnel matter pursuant to one MRSA 4056A.
Second.
Discussion. Of course, I wasn't supposed to let the cat out of the bag, which I already did for the executive session. But anyway, all, all, well, let's, let's call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Me, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Let's go into executive session. Thank you.